I'd like to call to order the November 21st, 2023 regular meeting of the Hastings School Board at 7:30. I appreciate everybody's accommodation for the slightly later start and the slightly different date. Given that our clerk is not in attendance, Treasure Dressley, could you take attendance? I'm sorry, I didn't coordinate that with you in advance. I just, I'm just processing it right now. Thank you.
Director Zuzik?
Present.
Vice Chair Mom?
Here.
Chair Hedin?
Here.
Director Dressley here.
Director Tate?
Here.
For the record, Directors Bysel and Davis are not in attendance tonight. I did receive notification from both of them, and I do not anticipate that they'll be coming later. They're out of pocket for tonight. I would ask anybody that is able to please stand, consider removing your headwear, and we'll repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would consider a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
So move Zuzik approving the agenda.
Second Tate?
We have a motion in a second on the table to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion?
I have one ask. I would like to make a motion to add, or I guess re-add policy 215 and the 215 PR back onto the agenda just for second read. If possible, I don't know if it's able to. Okay, so I make that motion.
Second, the motion to add 215 and 215 PR.
Okay, so we're at a point where we have a motion embedded inside of a motion. At this time, any conversation is going to be relevant to the second motion about adding policy 215 and policy 215 procedure, 215.1 procedure into the second reading. Is there any discussion regarding that motion? Director Dressley first.
So the rationale for not adding it onto the agenda was because when we were in the Policy Committee meeting updating the, updating the actual policy, there are parts of the 215 that are onto the policy that shouldn't be there. So that was the rationale for it. I thought, figured we'd bring it back to policy and get it corrected. It wasn't just formatting errors. It was actual language in the policy that shouldn't be there because of when we were both trying to update it at the same time. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm gonna go to Vice Chair Mom, and then I think I saw...
Well, she was...
The intent under, I think is to alternate perspective to the degree possible.
The reason I'm asking for this is because as of, what was it, Friday morning, it was on the agenda, and I was under the impression from our Policy Committee meeting that we were going to at least get a second read on this. From my understanding too, is that the, the content as a whole is not really what's in question. We are receiving comments back, and that will go to our meeting on the 29th of next Wednesday. But to allow for a second read tonight, knowing that we do have to make a few modifications, but in, in total, it is a decent product. It looks like a rainbow because there's lots of modifications to it, but we decided not to have it at the work session because we were comfortable with where it was at to get it on for a second read, to bring back to policy for additional changes as needed.
All right, I'm gonna turn the mic to Director Tate, and then following that, I would like to remind everybody that we're discussing the alternative to add it to the agenda. We're not discussing the topic. So I'll let you have your perspective, and then we can try and rein ourselves back into that practice. Director Tate?
I downloaded and began working through this agenda Saturday morning, so I have not read policy 215 or 215 PR since the first reading. So I would appreciate not adding that tonight as I am completely unprepared for a discussion of whatever you guys have currently.
And thank you for that and that consideration. It is in our procedures. So from my understanding, it has not changed since the first reading.
Immediately following the work session on November 8th, it was shared by Ms. Garcia, the policies for first reading, review, and second reading, and it is attached in there as of the 8th.
It's in the review folder for that, and I'm sure it's because she's seen the same thing that I seen when I opened it up and that in 215, there is six, seven, and eight, six, seven, eight, and nine that shouldn't be there. They should have been struck, but I don't know if I was deleting when she was copying or what happened, but something happened there. And that's, I'm assuming that's why it's in review. It's not for first or second reading.
My understanding is it was in review because it was a potential item for discussion at that work session, and she was not in attendance at the work session portion. She had come for the special meeting portion. That's my understanding of why it was there at that time pending that outcome. Director Zuzik?
I, my interest in making sure that we at least touch it for a second read tonight is to make sure that it keeps moving forward. And I'm not discussing the policy when I make this comment, but anything, whether it is structural about the policy, or contextual, or content, I think we can still have that conversation and move forward. And I don't see any harm or foul in bringing 215 forward tonight. My sense of urgency isn't significant. It's just that, boy, I want to keep those policies moving forward. And I think that whatever that conversation is, we can have it when we talk about the policy.
Director Tate, and then I'm gonna turn the microphone back to myself.
I would be in agreement with adding it to tonight if we could take a five-minute recess so that I could read it before we have the discussion.
All right, I'm gonna make one final statement, then I feel like we might be at a place where we can mo, take an action, vote on that motion on the table. I will point out that the, from a process perspective, this is not, this is not specific to this policy, this that the Policy Committee had identified policies for first reading and then identified policies for second reading at their last meeting. And then all of those policies carried forward with the exception of 215 and 215.1 PR, and that those were removed at the last minute. And, and it wasn't coordinated with the chair, and it wasn't coordinated with the committee prior to removing it. So I worry that we have a committee that, that left their last meeting with an understanding of what was happening next, and then that next thing did not happen. And so whether we get to this place, so that's why I would feel it's important to follow the procedure and our, and our commitment from the work, from a work session to a committee to the, to a second reading, and whether that results in substantive comments that doesn't allow, you know, that means it takes months or not, I just want to honor that process. Does anybody have anything else to add to the motion on the table to consider adding 215 and 215.1 PR this time? Okay, so we have a motion in a second on the table. I believe the motion was Director, Vice Chair Mom, and the most, the second was Director Zuzik, if I remember correctly. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. The motion carries unanimously, so that will show up in second reading. And when we get to, you know, we always get into that policy portion of the night, we can take a recess at that time. That will give our administrative assistant time to get the links into Board Book, which will also allow the public to see those links and to see them historically, if somebody wants to review it at a later time. Okay, so then we have a motion. Now we roll up, we step up, and the next motion on the table is to approve the agenda, and we have a second on that. I've lost track of who made that.
I have a procedural question. If something on the consent agenda needs to be resolved, is that something I do now or on the consent agenda?
We have used the practice, if I remember correctly, because I saw your email. Well, I saw the header of your email. I didn't actually read the body of it, sorry. I believe we've done that at the time of the consent agenda, but if you're, if you're confident about it, we could say something now. Because if you remove something from a consent agenda, to be clear, it becomes the first individual action item. It doesn't go somewhere else. Then you say you're removing it from consent, it becomes the first individual action item, and then whatever you want to do with it becomes that discussion at that time.
So I'd like to make a motion, a motion to...
So I, my only thing is I think we adopted the policy, the procedure that a single board member can ask for an item to be removed. So I think you can just ask for it to be removed.
I'd like for, I'd like for policy 412.1 PR to be removed from the consent agenda for us to be first discussion during our action items tonight.
Okay, so to be clear, we have both policy 412 and policy for, or excuse me, procedure 412.1 PR, and you're asking for 412.1 PR to be moved to an individual action item. Okay, just make sure the right thing gets moved. All right.
Just PR?
Yeah. Yeah, just for clarification, it's that single item. Okay, so that, that will be the first item in individual action, and we'll move just that, the procedures portion of it. Okay. Yeah, we haven't developed a good practice about consent. I think if we know confidently going in, this would be as fine a time as any is during the agenda. Is there any further discussion with regard to the agenda tonight? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. The motion to approve the agenda is approved unanimously. Our next action item for tonight is approval of the minutes from the October 25th. These are all 2023. The October 25th regular board meeting, the November 8th special board meeting, and the November 15th special board meeting.
So move Mom.
Second Dressley.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. Motion, Mom, second Dressley. Is there any discussion with regard to the minutes of those three meetings? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In favor, the motion to approve?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. We have a section, a second, excuse me, action item for the approval of the minutes from the October 30th, 2023 special board meeting. I would entertain a motion in a second.
Second Dressley.
Motion Mom, second Dressley to approve these minutes. Is there any discussion? Director Tate?
I just want to note, I wasn't at the meeting, nor have I reviewed any materials, so I plan to abstain.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion with regard to the minutes or the motion on the table? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Abstention. Tate. All right, we have four members approving. Nobody votes nay. I don't know what the right way to say that is. Because I say nobody in opposition, and that like adds way more energy than is necessary to the experience. And then Director Tate is abstaining. And with that, the minutes from all four of those meetings through two separate actions are approved. I'm gonna do a recognition of visitors, both those in person, online, and online in the future, as people watch over and over. And I would just want to take a second, more than a second, to thank the community for supporting our tech levy. That was, as we watched, school districts across the state of Minnesota who had tried to tell their story with regard to bonds and operating levies and technology levies. It was really important and heartwarming to have the community support us, to support the decision to go forward with that levy, and speaks to the, to the compelling interest that the community has in supporting our school districts and moving forward and staying relevant with regard to our technology and our cybersecurity. So I want to thank them for that. Our next act, our next item tonight for information is Raider Spotlight. Superintendent Champ?
All right, thank you. We did not invite any student groups tonight just because of the timing of this meeting. And so there's a lot though to be recognized. So first off, just also echo Chair Hedin's comments about the tech levy. I don't think, thank you, quite does it. Just true levels of gratitude for the community's support with that. Secondly, our swim team just finished their season, and I think when we're in a fall sport yet in November, that speaks volumes to how that season went for them. So congratulations to our swim team. Musical Theater just finished their performance last weekend with high school version of Chicago. So congrats to their work. And then our winter season is underway. And just a shout out to our middle school choirs. They are in the season of hallway performances right now. So if you come and you're lucky enough to hear hallway music, it's truly a treat. And just thank you again for everyone who participated in our Veterans Day program and for our keynote speaker. Thank you so much. It was just, again, a great tribute to our veterans. And then just a shout out to Tammy Ludwig. This is her first solo meeting. So thank you. You're doing awesome, and we'll help with a couple of those changes. So with that, thanks.
All right, terrific. Thank you. Our next item for information is a listening session summary. We did not have anybody speak to the board tonight, or asked to speak to the board tonight. So we have no summary to provide. With that, we're gonna move to our reports and discussions portion of the evening. And we're gonna open, we're opening with a headliner. Not a lot of places do that. Sometimes people have warm-up acts, but we don't. We go straight to the headliner. We're opening with our audit report. All right, welcome, Aaron.
All right, this is on, perfect. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. As mentioned, my name is Aaron Nielsen. I'm a partner with MMKR, the independent auditing firm that completed the audit for this year. You've received two reports, the financial statement and then the separate management report. We put together the PowerPoint presentation that I'll use to go through the information that isn't anything I'm surprising you with. It's simply some information I pulled from the management report to facilitate the presentation and keep the camera off my face, basically. So with that, we'll work our way through the PowerPoint presentation, sharing with you our role as independent auditors to provide the opinion on the financial statements for the district's financial statement audit, as well as the separate requirement for your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. You receive well in excess of the $750,000 threshold that requires that additional testing for your federal awards. We've issued our reports on internal control and compliance with regard to the financial statement audit under government auditing standards, the federal single audit, and then with regard to the Office of the State Auditor's legal compliance manual, the state laws and regulations. And I'll get right to it. We're pleased to report for your district audit this past year, we've issued what is known as an unmodified or a clean opinion, that the financial statements are fairly stated as of June 30th, 2023, and the results for the year then ended. So exactly what you're looking for with regard to our audit opinion. What isn't noted, but we did have to analyze, and the district had to do a lot of work to put it together, is there's new government auditing standards we had to consider with subscription-based information technology arrangements. So having to review the accounting for that. So your staff had some more challenges as part of the audit processes. All of them are going through with this year and the implementation there. Internal control and compliance with regard to the financial statement audit. Again, we're happy to share that we had no material weaknesses or instances of noncompliance to report with regard to that. And I'll move to the next slide. And again, a clean audit with regard to the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. They're fairly stated in relation to the rest of the financial statements. No material weaknesses or instance of noncompliance with that testing. And then we had no noncompliance with regard to the Office of State Auditors, various sections that were required to be tested. So there's seven broad categories with lots of questions within each individual area. And as mentioned, we had no findings this past year. With that, I'll move through the rest of the information pretty quickly. I'll keep it at a high level, and then if there's any questions at the end, I'll be happy to try to answer them and make sure we cover any topics you want to address. But as shared, we include a slide here for adjusted ADM or average daily membership. Funding is largely driven by the number of students that you serve. This past year, the district served an enrollment of 4,072 is the estimate that we closed the audit with. That is down about 61 or 1.5% from the prior year. Looking at the general fund, we use the slide here to show your financial position. We're simply grabbing some of the key marks as of June 30th for each one of the past 10 years here. As you can see, what I noted on my slide here is a similar financial position as of the prior year end. You see a slight increase or the increase in cash and unrestricted fund balance in line with that increase in expenditures this past year. We have several slides for the general fund. It is the primary operating fund for the district, so much larger in comparison with the remaining, remaining funds. And I'll get to that in just a moment. But a deeper dive into the components of the equity or the fund balance of the general fund, as you can see here, looking at that change, a similar unrestricted fund balance. And the top portion here, we share with you what's included, committed, assigned, and unassigned fund balances, and then a percentage of just that unassigned fund balance. So you can see similar percentages as compared to total expenditures for the district this past year. And the district has continued to meet your policy goal, which is about two months of operations. This slide that I have up here shows the general fund revenues. So we're looking at them by major source categories, property taxes, state sources, federal sources, and all other. Talking about the size of your organization for just the general fund alone, revenues for the general fund this past year amounted to $61.8 million, ending the year about 4.1% over budget and about 6.7% over the prior year. One thing I comment on with a lot of our districts or all of our districts, with regard to that general fund, you can see where those sources of funding come from, that concentration in state sources, making up about 67% this past year, followed by then property taxes at 20.6% for the June 30th year end. A common theme I also feel like I'll be saying at all my meetings or one of my earlier presentations in the year, but as you can see, the change in other sources is common that we're finding with our district audits this year. And that category is including investment earnings. And for many years, the rates or return have been so low, it's hardly made a blip in the financial statements, but that was a key factor in driving the favorable variance with revenues coming over budget and then part of the increase over the prior year. My next slide is on the general fund, so similar presentation to the aids or the revenues that we just talked about. When you look in the financial statement, you see our focus and organization of the expenditures there follows the administration, district support, and then elementary, secondary, and the other program categories within subs underneath it by the object category. Here we've consolidated for the whole general fund, looking at those object categories, salaries, benefits, purchase services, and so on. When you look this past year, your total expenditures amounted to $60.6 million, coming in very close to what was anticipated in the budget, within two tenths of one percent, so 0.2% under budget, and about 4% over the prior year. As, as I know, I've commented in the past and in other districts that we work with, you can see the concentration of spending in general, in the general fund to educate the students of the district is largely in salaries and benefits that we see everywhere for your district that made up about 74% of the spending in 2023. My next slide here, we're focused on the couple of the other operating funds, Food Service Fund and Special Revenue Community Service Fund, as you can see here. Just a quick comment, both of these funds are much smaller in size of operation when we compare them to the general fund. So we simply look at the fund balance or that equity of these two operations. As you can see, there was a slight decrease in both of these operations this past year, but as planned and anticipated in the budget. And then I just have a couple more slides to get through the internal service funds. So your district has been self-insured now for many years for health insurance and dental insurance, using a self-insured plan for your organization. As you can see, the timing and ups and downs will happen based on claims. Pandemic in recent years has had a significant effect, we've seen with these organizations' operations from year to year. This past year, you can see there was just a slight decrease or for, for the size of your organization, really, is 100,000 is a lot of money. But when you talk about your organization having 60 million for the general fund, you can see this past year, the net position for the internal service funds combined decreased about $100,000. That was primarily or entirely in the health insurance account, as the dental saw an increase this past year. And then my last slide, so I worry you out with all the previous slides, and we save the hardest one for last, I guess. So to this point, our focus has been on the individual funds of the organization. So the general fund, Food Service Community Service Fund, how we believe that our districts are operating from a day-to-day basis and the various programming that you're running. Those funds have a short-term perspective, so they look at, they don't include capital assets in those items and long-term debt. Where you get that perspective is with the entity-wide, the district-wide financial statements. So we consolidate all of the funds. The internal service funds are combined in there, and you can see, then we also provide a reconciliation in the top half here, where we go from your governmental funds, and then some of the differences, or all the differences, we just consolidate them to get you to that net position on an entity-wide basis. So we're capturing the capital assets of your organization, the buildings, along with the related bonds that offset the capital assets. And then the big change in recent years, and it's, it's been with us many years now, but pension obligations, the statewide pension plans for TRA and PERA are now part of your financial statements. As you can see, when we look at an entity-wide basis, you had an increase of about $10.3 million. Some of the confusing part of it is you can see a big portion of your net position is tied up in infrastructure. So those resources would not be available to put into programs as they're the capital assets you're using to provide services. The restricted category is largely what we see in your general fund or those assets that are in the Food Service Fund requirements, Community Service Fund, or you have to spend them in a manner for which you earn them or receive them. The increase this past year in the restricted includes an increase in assets restricted for capital asset acquisition, debt service, and then some other state funding restrictions. So one of your bonds is a little unique. We don't see it at all of our districts where you have a sinking fund, you're collecting from your taxpayers over many years, and you're depositing and holding it. So that's a significant portion of the increase in restricted. And then when that year comes to pay them off, it will offset the outstanding bonds that's currently in that net investment in capital asset. But that's a couple years away at least. The unrestricted, you can see, and it's always nicer to talk about increases than decreases. The increase you see there is largely the, well, a portion is the improved financial position of the general fund. But a majority of that increases, you can see, is in that from the pension adjustments. So the statewide pension plans improve their financial position when we look back. Well, I can't, it's a little goofy, the changes in all the... when we look back. Well, I can't, it's a little goofy, the changes in all the activity of the statewide pension plans and your proportionate share and the timing we're looking at. So you can see those obligations measured between the two years improved $9 million, which is why the unrestricted increased this past year. As I said, I saved the hardest for the last slide, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to go back and, or other areas you may saw.
Director Zuzik.
Aaron, if you can go back to slide number two. Thank you. It's the one with district financial audit and internal control and compliance. One more. Thanks. Thanks. So I say this tonight because it's so important that the community knows this. And sitting in our audience tonight live are four of the new board members that will join our board in January. And so I just want to put this in context. You're, you are a partner at MMKR. And so you've got a lot of experience doing this. And you do not only schools, but you do many other government agencies.
Really, schools and cities.
Schools and cities. And so your role is to be on behalf of the board and on behalf of the community, an external, very serious, very detailed look at the district. That's what your role is. And we have steps along the way as a school board to make sure that the budget is in line and everything is going well. But for far more than a decade, we've been recognized for good financial management in Hastings Public Schools. And my, we haven't talked, I don't think I've ever even met you, so I apologize for that. But these ratings are really significant. Those two comments are significant comments. And those are the two statements that I think beget an intention of respect from the community for our financial department, the people that are responsible for financial services. And maybe I want to pose this as a question. So let me think about this for a moment. Again, we've not talked about it, but how frequently does a district hit these two measures? And then on slide number three, those two measures?
Thank you. I appreciate the question. I would have to say the unmodified opinion is common because they, we work to a point of, it doesn't share with you that, hey, you might not like your results. It means what's in your book or the audit is what it is. We agree with what your staff has provided us, and that's the financial position as it is. So even an entity that is in poor financial condition or statutory operating debt, which we're not, I want to make that clear, could receive an unmodified opinion. When you ask material weaknesses, that's with regard to, just to be clear, it's our review, we search and we're sharing with you. If we see anything, we're not providing an opinion on internal controls because our focus is on the financial audit and how that information looks. However, if we see a concern, we would report it to you. A common finding that we have in many organizations is a lack of a segregation of proper duties. And it's just, it's not that uncommon for some of the governments we work with because some have such small finance staff that they can't properly get all the checks and balances in. So we have several that received that finding. With regard to the next slide, in recent years, we've seen an increase, I would say, in single audit findings. And primarily the single audit, I would say, because of all the changes with COVID funds and additional resources that districts have received in a lot of areas that never received federal funds. So technology places, you know, people are having, getting funds for technology and they've never received federal funds. And there's additional requirements when you get those. So.
Yeah. And I agree with what you've said. And furthermore, it, your comment leads to this belief. It is harder now than ever to get a clean audit, pardon me, not, I mean, an unmodified opinion audit, and to get a clean opinion on the, on the CIPA. And my point is, I want the district to know, I want the community to know how clean our finances are. And it's remarkable. Given, given even, even your vast experience, it is remarkable.
Yes. And I'm glad to report that you have not had findings. I want to make sure I'm accurate with that, that, you know, that it's crystal clear what I can opine on. You know, I won't provide you an opinion or my thought, but what we found exactly to maintain that independence. So I agree, we did not have any findings this past year. We have not had findings in the federal audit. And I'm sure your staff can probably jump in better than I could on federal audits this past year. I think we had four programs that we had to select and test, if I'm remembering correctly, this past year specifically. And normally that might be two for you. And each one's kind of an additional audit of each individual program. So there is a level of scrutiny you're diving into. And, you know, one of the graphs we showed was how much your federal funds are as a percentage of your revenues of the general fund. And it's a much lower percent taxes or state aids. So there is just an additional level of scrutiny that goes with that. And we're pleased to report we did not have any findings. Part of my caution is that I've got other districts and they have findings. And I try to tell the boards that that's not the end of the world if you get a finding. We're digging in and finding things. It's, it's how you react to it. And, and I'd say your board, the board's been intentional about, okay, how are we going to fix this when that happens? And your staff's been very good about, okay, how do we fix this? And, you know, some things, guys, we might have recommendations that we provide to staff that don't rise to the level of finding. And they're responsive to those as well. So.
And your caution is well regarded and I appreciate it. I thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments at this time with regard to the audit? I believe we have this. I'm sorry, I should have looked at this in advance.
As an action item?
It is an action item for individual action. So it's, it's kind of a ways down there. But it isn't, because this is not, well, this is an annual process. It is not a common process. So we're, we want to take individual action on it. So we'll be seeing that a little bit later. But this would be a great opportunity if there's any board questions or comments. Okay. Hearing none. Thank you. Really appreciate your time, Aaron. Our next report for tonight is a presentation by a perception survey. And I'll ask Dr. Champa to make an introduction.
All right. Thank you. We have Darren Severs with us tonight. So welcome, Darren. Darren, earlier, we conducted a school perception survey, and Darren will tell us all about it. But we were very intentional to have that with our staff, our families, and our students. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Severs. Thank you.
Okay, great. I've been with the company for 18 months, but I have a much deeper history with the company because I was a customer of School Perceptions. I was with the same school district for 27 years down in suburban Milwaukee. I was a high school counselor as a young man, then elementary principal, high school principal, and then the last 10 years a superintendent. District of about 3,500 kids, operating budget of about $40 million. And that's one like Hastings, 25 miles outside of the Milwaukee inner city. So very neat place to live and raise a family. But I was born and raised in Lake City, Minnesota. And I always promised mom that as she got older, if she needed anything, that I would, I would never lose sight of that. And so I looked for opportunities to move home to Minnesota. And as a regular customer of School Perceptions, they said we'd love to have a superintendent on our team to present to boards and to write the surveys and gather the data on behalf of districts. So now I'm on the other side of the table. Back in, the district was called Slinger, Wisconsin. We use School Perceptions for capital referendums, where we remodeled our schools. Right now, I've done projects for Ellsworth River Falls, Hudson, Cannon Falls, just this fall in the area. But we also, we had something in the Milwaukee area called COVID. I don't know if you had that in Hastings. But we did a survey of our community about what opening up post-pandemic would look like. I had so many people screaming at us about stay open, don't you dare stay closed. We said, let's use School Perceptions and launch a survey. And all those people that aren't yelling and shaking their fist in my face, how do they feel? And we had 88% response rate, and we used our data to reopen schools. And so I really believe in this company, feel blessed that they gave me an opportunity to work on their behalf. The owner of the company is a parent in my school district, so he watched me for 10 years and asked if I would join the team. So now I'm working out of Lake City. I just did a staff, student, and parent survey, just like yours, for Cannon Falls. We presented their findings, their staff at the start of the year. Tammy will never tell you this, so I'm gonna, we did this for Pine Island last year and had some of the highest results in the history of the company for staff, student, and parent findings under her leadership for nine years. And so when she called and said, would you do this for Hastings? I said, absolutely. So I'm going to report your findings tonight. Don't mean to have my back to the new board members here. But so I'm going to preface this by telling you a little bit about our table of contents. I'm going to give you a brief history of the company. Then we're going to get right into the respondent information. You actually have three presentations blended together into one. So I'm going to start with the parent results, then we'll go to the students, pardon me, then we'll go to the staff, and then we'll wrap up with the kids. Okay. Little history of our company, we've been in existence for 21 years, exclusively focused on being a third-party data gathering company for schools. We've done over 10,000 staff, parent, and student surveys and community planning surveys. And we need to update that third bullet point. We're just about to top the 1,000 district number as far as districts we've helped with the referendum planning process in all 50 states. I've done the staff, student, parent survey for Dallas Public Schools in New York City, but also for Medelia, North Dakota with 129 kids and everyone in between. So this is the members of the team that worked on your project, our president and founder, Bill Foster, a carry worked on the scenes to make sure we had the email addresses and could get the survey to two people. And then I wrote the survey, gathered all the data, and put together tonight's PowerPoint for you. So we're going to start diving right into your results. Closed the survey on the 23rd of October. Parents, 780 parents responded to the survey. That's an 18% participation rate. The obvious question is, is that good? Is that bad? It's a little below average. And I would tell you, the company average on a parent survey that's emailed to them like we did is 30%. But it's very statistically reliable. There's two metrics we look for, whether it's referendum surveys for a bond or for a levy, or a tech levy. As long as we hit 10%, we find that the results are very indicative of the public opinion, that anything beyond that, there's the same distribution of those same opinions, the further you go up. Another number we'd like to see is 500 or more. You're at 780. Just gave a report, thanks to Tammy putting me in a conference room for Edgerton, Minnesota. They're considering 13 to $24 million worth of bond referendums. And they only had 360 people respond. Now that was a 34% response rate, but, but it's a small community. And so there's going to be a margin for error there as they do their planning. This is a good response, and I'm very satisfied with this response, particularly given when I interviewed with this board back in the fall, I did have a parent in the audience ask me to call her, and she's saying, you know, this school district is surveyed a lot. What's different about you? I said, well, we're going to be very deliberate about communicating our findings. That's the strength of our company. We're very good at gathering the data, but we have a deep, we've done 10,000 of these. So we have a deep pool of warehouse data to compare your results to other districts your size. And so we'll put your results in perspective tonight on a national percentile rank. It's not going to be just 70% of the people felt this way. We'll be able to tell you how that compares to other districts to ask that same question. Okay? So enough of that. Here's, here's what we found out. What schools did these parents have children attending? That's your distribution. Obviously, it's going to add up to more than 100% because they have kids at multiple buildings. So that's nice to see. And that's probably fairly representative enrollment. And this next slide will definitely show you the distribution for enrollment. Everything between kindergarten 10%, otherwise between 11% and 14% per grade level. So very nice spread of opinions across the entire district. We did ask them a few questions about what programs do their, their children participate in, gifted and talented, special education, 504, which is medical needs that special education IEP would not cover, second language, or none of the above. And what this allows Tammy and her leadership team to do is if they really want to dive in and say, okay, how do our special education parents feel? She's got access to all the survey results on our server, clicks one button, and just the results for the special ed parents will load. That was one thing with, when we did this in my district, we unearthed some very specific problems in our special education department that we, we had to change some staffing and, and change some approaches in some, a couple of buildings because we distributed it by special education and a specific elementary school, which you're able to do, is disaggregate it by a grade level, by a location, by a program. And then your racial distribution. And while we're talking with parents, we did ask them for some input. This is a brand-new feature that we have on the survey. This was not something we had in Pine Island last spring when we surveyed for Tammy, but something we felt was important. As we are post-COVID, we're finding that the parents are wanting, wanting a voice on planning for the future with their schools. And, and we asked your parents, what are the top four areas that they should be, should be a priority in Hastings? And pretty clear data there, particularly the top five. Safety and security is a concern. Hardly a day goes by, you don't hear a problem at a school, sadly. Recruiting and retaining a high-quality staff, number two, and more challenging than ever. And you'll see in the staff data that, that there's some, the staff has some, some feelings. Student behavior, particularly post-COVID, has been a challenge. Kids came back post-COVID, and some of them have challenged to get back into a traditional classroom and learn the traditional way. And mental health is a nationwide crisis across schools. In fact, the lack of quality practitioners to keep up with the demand has been a big challenge. Not enough school psychologists, not enough school counselors, and private, private agencies to support kids' needs. And almost every district we, we survey, the career and tech ed areas, we don't have enough skilled, skilled tradesmen. My project with School Perceptions back in 2017 was about 12 million of the 30 million was a new tech ed area where we can train kids in the trades on metals and woods and engineering and robotics. And more and more of our projects, we have 47 community referendum projects out this fall across the Midwest. Almost everyone is asking that same question about, could we, could we beef up our tech ed, tech ed offerings for the skilled trades? So index analysis, every question on this parent survey, and there's roughly 35 of them, feeds into one of five areas. And so I'm going to give you a summary of your findings on how the parents are feeling as far as being informed, having a family feel included, whether they're experiencing educational excellence, the atmosphere of the school, and then the overall experience. Now, your rating scales on a scale of one to five. But philosophically, what we do differently than a lot of companies is we don't offer a three, I'm not sure. Because human nature is, when in doubt, just take the easy way out and click I'm not sure. We allow them to say, I don't know, doesn't apply, or I'm not sure, however you want to phrase it, but it isn't calculated in the average. If they're not sure, it's a zero and it's set aside. So we only rate those that have an opinion of agree or strongly agree, or disagree strongly disagree. And so all these metrics will be based on that. So your true median score, average score is a three. So what you as a district are looking for is as many of these to be above three as possible. So under your current score, these summary indexes that all the questions feed into, your parents give you some nice feedback. What I did, at Tammy's request, I took it a step further, though. And we did compare your scores to other districts. And national percentile ranking, zero to 100, or technically one to 99, that's your percentile ranking compared to other districts in that 4,000 or student range with your staff to student ratio, with your, your free and reduced lunch ratio, poverty level. We compared you several hundred districts about your size. And that tells you where your percentile ranking is. Those are more of just holistic scores that maybe you could put on the website. And this is what you told us as parents. If they don't want to click through the next 12 slides, about 12. If they don't wanna click through the next twelve slides, about thirty-five questions, but you as a board, I'm gonna present question by question your findings using the exact same rating scale. And I'm gonna talk to you about how we summarize the findings. So we asked some questions about leadership and communication. So let's just use this as a sample. District administration is doing what it takes to make our district successful. Seventy-six percent gave you a four or a five, agree or strongly agree. For an average score across all responders of three point six percent. And you're at the twenty-third percentile as far as how they compared to others. Does that scoring process make sense here than your questions? Because that's what I'm gonna do for the next seventy slides now. So if you, hopefully, if you understand that one, you'll be good to go. Okay? So districts heading in the right direction. And that's where I'm pleased that Tammy asked for us to do the percentile ranking because you'll see districts heading in the right direction. Sixty-six percent gave you a four or five for an average of a three point three four. So if you just looked at raw scores, you may say, ooh. But you need the percentile rank to put it into context. And then the school board is doing what it takes to make our district successful. Again, sixty-two percent, three point two, sixteenth percentile. And these are, I'll just be very candid, these are tough times for school boards and superintendents to ask these questions. So I give you credit for going to survey because it shows you wanna get better. And if I'm gonna go back one graphic here, if you do this a year from now, which most of our clients, once they do this, they say, okay, we'll do it again next year, the exact same time. Next year, we'll be able to say, current score, previous score, fall of twenty-three, percentage change. Okay? And then we'll refresh that comparison percentile and see what areas you were able to grow. But don't misunderstand, this isn't about just looking for trouble. You also wanna identify your strengths. I always tell our districts, you're not just looking to improve weak areas, you're also protecting your strong areas. And that's a mistake. Some districts are always just looking to fix a problem and then they'll neglect a strong area and then suddenly that becomes a weakness. Okay, overall, how would you rate communication from the district? Seventy-three percent gave you good or great. So communication was a strength. Another very important question you ask, we ask parents on your behalf, how do you want to hear from the school? How do you like to receive information? No surprise, an email is the best way to go these days. That's just, it's just the norm. But those text notifications about urgent things, late start because of weather, early release or a closing, the website, parent portal and so on. Always helpful because some districts have a devoted person working on Twitter throughout the day. And this is about typical of our Twitter scores. You may think Twitter or X is this powerhouse out there. People don't go there for school news. So if you're spending a lot of time on that as a district leadership team, it's misplaced energy. Okay? Facebook, maybe, Twitter, no. All right. So now we're gonna get into their, their view of their school experience. They gave, we had three questions that talk about the board, district direction and district leaders. The rest are more building-based types of questions. They can be disaggregated by building. We did not do that tonight. It's our tendency not to isolate this elementary against that elementary in a public format like this. These are the blended results K through twelve. But Tammy has a wherewithal to, with a click of a button, just to look at this elementary, that elementary, how's the middle school doing? Okay? So we asked a question, most days my child enjoys going to school. Now, you know how we're showing the results? We decided to rank them highest comparison percentile rank to the lowest for each section of questions. So the parents feel like their kids are enjoying coming to your schools. And they feel like the staff treats them with dignity and respect. And they know how to support their child's learning, which has been one of our biggest challenge areas for a lot of districts we're working with, particularly post-COVID. As things have evolved over these times, some things have become more technological with the S R money and some of the devices have been added and parents have struggled to support. But good feedback from your parents, all those above four, all of those fiftieth percentile or higher. Child can get help when they need it, communications timely and transparent. Child is able to handle the emotional challenges of school. We don't really worry about a score until they get in the lowest twenty, twenty-fifth percentile or lower because these are all right in the average range. Feel welcome at school. Satisfied with how much the child is learning. Again, scores aren't that different, but compared to other districts, sounds like they'd like a bit more feedback, opportunities to provide feedback to the school or teachers. Well, guess what? You just launched a survey, so they were just given one. Okay? Teachers, school teaches with materials that reflect their, the family's cultural and racial backgrounds. Not an easy task in, in the Midwest and in some of our, you saw the racial distribution on one of the opening slides here. So that's not easy to do. I just actually managed the surveys for my old school district. And there, that's one of their lowest ranking areas because it's just a very white, very, very mono-style district as far as languages and culture and race. And so very isolated incidences where they can teach with different races and backgrounds culturally. Opportunities for parental involvement. Satisfied with school's efforts to address bullying. So I'm gonna do a little bit of a spoiler alert here. That being in the lowest twenty-fourth percentile. What we as a company try to do is coach you to look at, are there areas across all three surveys that maybe have some overlap? Student behavior had some overlap and you're gonna see that when I talk about the, the staff results and you're gonna see that when we talk about the student results. So if you're looking for, what are our first steps? You don't come out of this process with a homework list of fifteen tasks. Two or three things that'll make a really good impact because moving the needle on these things is hard. You're talking about system-wide change. Child feeling or the, the school has hacked the expectation for my child. My child feels safe at school. That may be tied to that bullying score. And again, we'll talk about that more. At least one staff member I feel comfortable contacting. Healthy culture at our school. Schools, facilities are clean and well-kept, but notice north of four, ninety-one percent of four or five, that tells you post-COVID, everyone's doubling down on their cleaning protocols and things. So again, that, I would not lose sleep over as a board and district leadership team because that just, I think if you, if we made that score four point one two, you'd probably be in the fortieth percentile. They're just tightly grouped because everyone is making cleaning a priority post-COVID and opening back up. Also ask them, how about homework? Homework's a hot topic right now. Seventy percent, it's just said it's just right. And what about participation, extracurricular or sports activities? One of my pet questions because I firmly believe not every child comes to school to learn. Some may come to compete and then learning's a byproduct of that competing or being on the robotics team or whatever, forensics. And seventy percent of your kids are involved in activity, which is nice to see. I feel like that just rounds out the student to be in something after that last bell rings. And we asked a question, do they have access to reliable internet? May seem like a silly question in Hastings, Minnesota, but it's not so much in northern Minnesota, northern Wisconsin, where they got all these one-to-one devices. And we find out when we survey, only fifty percent of them can get an internet signal at home. So how do you send an assignment home on the new Chromebook if they don't have connection to the internet? So that's why we asked that question. So something new we've added, top five, bottom five, because we just rattled off a whole lot of information for you. So these are the five areas you scored the highest. These are areas to protect and maintain. And then the five lowest scoring areas. And within these, again, not necessarily all five turn into action plans for district. This is where district leaders and school boards need to think about this and maybe come back and say, what are we gonna prioritize? And as I said, we're gonna go into the next report. But the closing question we ask on every survey and we ask this on every bond referendum survey as well. On a scale of zero to ten, how likely would you recommend the school to a friend or family member? We found that this score correlates very highly with referendums passing if you're trying to remodel your schools because if they love you or at least like you, they'll let their taxes go up a little bit. But if they're mad at you, like the district I just reported to yesterday, they're down in the five point five range. They're gonna have a hard time passing anything because their community is mad at them. Our average score for all the districts where we've asked this question, and it's, and it's a lot of them, seven point three four, you came in as seven point oh one. Percentile ranking of thirty-third. But very top-heavy, if you noticed that. When given the opportunity on this one, we do allow them that, that neutral seventeen percent just landed right in the middle. They weren't gonna say either way. Nineteen percent gave you a ten. And lots of eight, nines and tens. So some good stuff. All right. Any questions? Or maybe should I, I'll just go through the staff and the students and then we'll just take questions across all three at the end. How about? All right, here's your staff report. This is the report. Now, I'm gonna point out, I've never done a three survey report like Hastings before. Typically, parent, staff and student data all is pretty similar. Yours is like the stock market. The staff report came in, this is gonna be some tough data for you to look at. Okay? Three hundred and seventy-six responses, sixty-seven percent participation rate. That's right at the company average. Company average is seventy percent on a staff survey. And that should grow, particularly if they say, oh, my goodness, under Tammy and our, and our principal's leadership, not only did they ask a question, but they came back to us and said, we're gonna do something about it. That's what Jeff Sampson did in Cannon Falls. He had me be their opening speaker for the opening day of school in service because he had specific things he wanted me to report on because he and his leadership team were gonna make that a point of emphasis. He really wanted to say, we are listening to you and we're gonna work on some stuff. So that's a good response rate. These are the, where they, they said that they worked. There's some district office scores, district-wise scores. One of the things we pride ourselves on in this company though is confidentiality. So if we wanted to disaggregate things by jobs, if there's five or less of that position in the district, we can't disaggregate it because that's such a small pool that you could maybe have a risk of identifying those people. Okay? And we really rather have their feedback than have them worry about being, being identified. So this is the distribution of positions, forty-nine percent teachers. And we have educational specialists, that's your counselor, counselors, reading specialist, library, paraprofessionals, support staff, administration. Nice distribution of, of work experience. One of the highest more than ten years scores I've ever seen. So your retention is strong. And it can only be stronger by asking them what can be done to improve their working conditions. Again, index analysis, five indexes for employees. Academics, engagement, do they feel supported? How do they feel the student experiences? How do they feel the staff experiences? Lower scores you see under the average score and lower comparison percentile rankings too. Same process. You ask them about their workday. Now, you may say, of course, they feel the, the staff does a good job. Doesn't everybody report that way? Not the case. I've had some tough presentations where I've had to say, your staff doesn't respect the job that the others do because you're at the twelfth percentile on the very same question. So it's not a given. But then things drop from there. Input from a broad group of staff members. Remember, I mentioned discipline. Twelfth percentile on staff handling discipline in a consistent manner. And probably closely correlated to that, most days I look forward to going to work, low score there. Do I feel supported by my supervisor administrator when I make a decision? Seventh percentile. Our school's student discipline practices and policies are effective, two point two four in the seventh percentile. Information important to my work is shared with me in a timely and effective manner. Comfortable communicating with my supervisor administrator. The amount of work I'm asked to do is reasonable or manageable. That one has been a challenging score for a lot of districts right now though because budgets are tight, staff's been cut, more is being asked of them than ever before. Not all, but many. All right, what about their work environment? Does the district head in the right direction? Feel safe at work? School board question. Opportunities for training and professional development. Training with different backgrounds. Useful feedback on my work. And then what about support? This is where things were better. Good relationship with coworkers. Four point four two, ninety-six percent, give it a four or five. So that speaks to forty-four percent being ten years. They, they like their colleagues. There's just some things that they would like to see improved within the day-to-day. Process to ensure every student has a connection with at least one adult at school. That was interesting for me to see because wait till you see your students' scores. The students feel connected to their staff and the staff recognize that, that they're connected to their kids. I have access to technology support I need and I have the technology I need. This one, many districts have, you'd think that these would always be tightly aligned, not so. With S R money, many districts bought a lot of devices, but they forgot to add the staff to help troubleshoot the devices. So they may have a device, but nobody knows how to run it and they don't have enough people to buzz around and troubleshoot, making sure that everything's working. Not the case in Hastings. It feels supported by the parents and community. Pay practices are fair, that's a glaring example. Without that comparison percentile, how do you know how you're doing? You'd have seen forty-seven percent giving you a four or five and a two point eight five and thought that would have been at the first percentile. Not necessarily. Not a glowing score, but not as low as you probably would have thought if we wouldn't have had that comparison percentile because that's just one where rarely is that ever a glowing score of the district. Nobody's saying, yeah, in fact, you're paying me too much. I think I need to give some money back. I think, you know, it's just, it's just, pay is always gonna be a controversial subject. Social, emotional needs of all students. Parents expressed worry about that, so are the staff. Another communication score, staff input. And then another diverse backgrounds score, not so different than what the parents told you. And then I have the materials and supplies to do my job well. I think grade level budgets, department budgets, they're feeling like they just don't have enough to have what they need. And then we, we have tried to disaggregate that whole support students with different backgrounds and get a little more specific. Well, we asked about, what about gender? What about special needs? Cultural backgrounds, racial backgrounds and economic backgrounds. So within the staff, top five. Good climate, good tech. And then the lowest five. Lot of crossover there, communication and input. Workload in supplies. Then on a scale of zero to ten, how likely would you recommend the district as a place of employment? Twenty-two percent being neutral, being the highest scoring, which is interesting. So again, that speaks to me that this is a staff that's trying to give you the benefit of the doubt. But when asked specific questions, they, they wanted to tell you some specific things because there's some things that are off the charts here. How they feel one another's doing, how they like working with each other. All right, then let's talk about the students. This is where this, this report kinda blew my mind because the kids, all this adult stuff, the kids are oblivious to it. They, they, they love you. Nineteen hundred and seventy-eight kids took the survey, sixty-eight percent participation rate. That's a little lower than we see. Our company average is more like seventy-five to eighty percent. There are some things that maybe in year two, if Tammy and her leadership team decides they wanna come back around and measure a year of growth and progress, maybe set aside a homeroom or a dedicated time and really urge the kids. Maybe if you tell the kids about the results and they see, oh, wow, they actually, this wasn't just some, because kids are like, ah, it's a survey, I'll never hear another thing about this. Maybe, maybe some of this, the results could be shared with the kids and they say, they're actually really listening to us. Or they could share, this is what we're doing with a new student program based on the survey. Although the results are, are quite, quite strong. Here is the distribution of grade levels. We typically cut off at fourth grade as a company and Tammy decided to go with that in Pine Island and in Hastings. You get much below fourth grade and that's a little tricky for them to really, you know, the fourth grade is where you're not learning and read anymore. You're reading to learn. You're reading chapters in a book in social studies and science. And so it just And so it just seemed like a natural place to have their own opinions about their learning. Same indexes, just use a kid, more kid-friendly language. Definitely sort of, not really, no. But we did not give them the cop-out either because kids, for sure, when an adult, they're going, ah, whatever, I'm not sure. Here's your indexes for the kids. We asked them about, do they feel connected to the school? How do they feel about their learning? How do they feel about their learning environment? And do they feel accepted, respected? Item analysis. If I need help, I can talk to my teachers outside of class? Good stuff. They try their best at school and that's not a popular or cool thing to answer, given your best. But they said they do. Good online access, good access to devices. Teachers are explaining things in a way that they get. They can relate to what they're learning. Teachers make class fun and interesting. And they're not just being lectured at. There's an interaction with them. They're getting called on in class. Again, look at that. Lowest score is at the average range of the 40th, the fourth percentile on their experience with their classes and teachers. How about life at school? If I were bullied, I'd feel comfortable talking to someone about it. Teachers treat me with respect. Feel safe answering questions, even when I'm not sure if I have the right answer. Taking a risk. Being myself. Students treat me with respect. They feel cared for. You know, here's what I have to say. You see some of those results in that adult survey with the staff? Typically, as I said, the scores are aligned. This tells me the staff are, whatever they're feeling about certain elements of their working conditions, they're not taking it out on the kids and they're not taking it out on the parents. You know, they're doing their job. They just want to be heard sooner or later, okay? So that's good stuff. They feel safe at school. They like to learn new things. One of the lower scores in this section, most kids at school follow the rules. And this is where I talked about those triangulations. Parents worried about bullying and some of the student respect factors, safety factors, and the staff absolutely made it known. So you could get three for the price of one just by doing some policy revisions and looking at procedures when it comes to behaviors. People around me, if I have a problem, love to see this score. If I have a problem, there's an adult I can talk to about it. Talk to people outside of school about what I'm learning. This is the highest score I've ever seen in this question. Even some of our most glorious results, that's one of the lowest because it's not cool to go talk about what you're learning outside of school. Get my hair cut at Cost Cutters and tell her I had this cool lesson in biology, but in Hastings, it must be cool. And so I have friends who help me when I need help. I like helping other people. Some neat, I mean, these are really high scores on these questions that show compassion. Homework and projects are meaningful, not just busy work. They're engaged with their parents in their learning. Remember, we asked the parents if they hear about what their kids are learning at home? Yeah, and the kids are admitting that they can talk to their parents about what they're learning at school. One of my favorite questions, I have a friend to sit with at lunch or hang out with at school. Underrated thing, just to have a friend you can have lunch with, take a break from your studies. I like working groups with my classmates. COVID took all that group work away and we're trying to get back to that. Homework and projects are more than just busy work. Again, I want to give you, that's really a big question these days. And then, do any of these factors make learning hard for you? The blue, royal blue bar is your high schoolers, nine through 12. The yellow bar is your fourth through eighth. So high schoolers trying to balance stress, test anxiety. Number three, though, for them, distracting behaviors of other kids. Remember, we talked about those triangulations of policies and procedures when it comes to discipline. When it comes to the fourth through eighth graders, highest score was with test anxiety. Second highest score was distracting behaviors of other kids. So good data there for the staff to see as far as, you know, you're going to come back to your staff and say, hey, we're going to try to do this and try to do that to try to improve your working conditions. What are your thoughts on what we can do for the kids here with some of these rating So again, top five. Lots of strengths to protect and maintain, particularly the connections between kids and the staff. And again, some work to do, but not anything remotely close to what you saw from the staff Kids following rules. And somehow, all that relates to safety and distracting behaviors. Then on a scale of zero to 10, how likely, how much do they like their school? We asked them and you're in the top 33% of the nation. So I know that was a lot. What questions do you have for me about either of any of the three surveys? Our methodology? Anything related to this whole process?
I'll just speak while other people are thinking.
Yeah.
Which I like to believe is not a habit I have, but it might be true. Thank you. I did appreciate you pointing out the, taking the time to make all three presentations at the same time. And while I did take the time to look at this prior to the meeting until I sat down and heard you talk about the triangulation of data and the degree to which students are enjoying their experience and having a positive learning experience in Hastings. You know, students are at the heart of what we do and so that feedback, I don't know, it's energizing. And it's energizing to the point of continuing to do the work on protecting that and then building, protecting and building. So I appreciate that and I know we've already made, you know, we've made some adjustments on how we're, as a board, hearing about our behaviors and disciplines and we're learning more about that and we're continuing to grow in some of those areas. And I'm just excited for boards going forward, when they reflect and ask questions, to have this data on hand and to have Dr. Champa, I'm sure with your support, if necessary, like look at that information and make informed decisions and then build that rhythm and discipline of doing it into the future. This is, this feels very valuable.
One of my favorite meetings of spring was Tammy invited me to Pine Island. I drove over from Lake City and presented the findings to their staff because they're on the front lines with the kids. And, you know, there's a couple metrics there. She said, hey, this is something I can, I think it was supply budget was one of the critical areas for, she's frugal. I don't use the word cheap, frugal. And you've got to be frugal in today's school. But, and for me, in my district near Milwaukee, I unearthed a huge blind spot when I disaggregated it. I didn't realize how archaic our support staff or the paraprofessional pay scale was. I'd worked so hard because they blew up teachers' unions in Wisconsin. And my first, 10 years ago, my first day in the job, we didn't have a handbook, we didn't have a pay scale, we had nothing. I had to invent it from scratch. I was so focused on salary structures and pay scales that I lost sight of how competitive we were making our wages for our support staff and our food service people and the people on the front line feeding the kids and helping them with their spelling words and breakouts. And we did some things and with a year, that score soared because we were able to disaggregate some of those problem areas and really identify some specific budgetary things we could do. And I'm not going to begin to tell you what you should do in Hastings. That's not my role. My role is to gather the data. You're the Hastings leaders that can take this and make some meaningful changes that will move the needle for you. And maybe in a year, if you want me to, I'll come back and we'll ask them the same questions again and see if, see how things have progressed.
I don't know if this question goes to Darren. Your presentation was remarkable. Thank you. And it is baseline data and we go somewhere from here and we want to go up. And so I think the question probably goes to Dr. Champa. How much of this, you know, I'm thinking about the balance between the board's responsibility and governance and leadership versus management. And so how much of this work, and please speak to it in regard to both your past practice as it informs what we're doing in Hastings. How much of this is really going to be done at this table? And how much of it happens with your administrative team? Just so that we, as board members and the community understands, whose work is this? Because there's, to your point, there's like a few crashing lightning bolts that I think we can take care of. Pretty low-hanging fruit, so.
And you'd be surprised if you take action on a couple of the most low-hanging fruit and the staff see that, some of those other scores are going to follow right along with because they just say they're, we were surveyed and we actually were heard and they did something about it this time.
Yeah, so Dr. Champa.
Sure. I think it's everyone's, right? So this is data that we're all owning. And so on Monday, we'll present this exact same data, I will in this case, to our licensed staff. So they will see it and then we're talking about it in principal groups. And so everyone will, again, it's looking at themes, right? What are those top themes to look at? Because we can't boil the ocean and how do we, how do we start tackling those things? And then by building, because the data looks different from building to building. And so to have conversations about what will that action plan in that building look like? And we can, and I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated in the survey and who now is rolling up their sleeves to really also embrace the results that we have. Because it's really easy to say, 90%, and that's at the 38th percentile? Like, how does that work, right? And so to understand that, yeah, in comparison, that is still an area that we really want to continue to grow. And also, I already heard, don't give a survey in October. Nobody's happy in October. And I think what we're looking for are the trends and the things that we can pick up and make some improvements on.
That bozo superintendent slinger gave the survey in February. You think that's a good time to ask a question? The holiday rush is over. Gray February days and winter's never going to end, right? How are you feeling about things? Not my best move. Not my best move.
So I want to remind everybody, both the board and anybody that's looking at this online, is this entire presentation is available on Board Book. You can sit down, you can listen to it again, or you can just look through it in the Board Book link and reflect. And reflect and think about, think about themes and think about next questions. Because I think the place where I see it embedded, the governance level is at the big question level and it's at the goal-setting level and then there's the operational side. So, you know, this is, this is stuff that's got to sink in for a little bit, but it's out there, it's available, you're able to go back and look at it again. Did you?
So thank you very much for the presentation. I think the question I have though is more for Dr. Champa. Do you know how many students could have taken the survey? Based on the one through three or K through three couldn't take it?
Yes.
So we were pretty close to.
So we had 68% of those that could have. So that didn't include the K through three. The principals in those buildings, though, wanted to replicate and do the finals. So they had similar data for our younger students.
Probably about 2,800, I think you're around 1,780. And I think it's 68%.
So about 1,000.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks for allowing so much time so I could be so thorough. I appreciate that, too.
Thank you for your time. Very much appreciate it.
Drive safe.
All right, be safe. So just being cognizant of the time and where we've been at, I'm going to tell people, my goal here will be to, we'll get up to the policy committee meeting action. And at that point, maybe just prior to starting the policy committee meeting report, we would take a five-minute recess. And we can use the restroom. 2:15 and 2:15.1 PR have been added back into Board Book. Take some time to read that. And then we'll just pedal to the metal, all right, at that point. But little sense of anticipation, that's when your break is coming. All right, and with that, now we're going to move to a superintendent's portion of our reports tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Champa.
Was that code for be brief?
Yeah, that's.
I got it, I got it. Okay, so just a couple of things. Just going back to the survey results, just a reminder, we have everyone working really hard. And so some of the data is a little bit difficult and so just applaud everyone for acknowledging and working to improve the areas that we can and celebrate the other areas that we have to celebrate. And certainly, our students told us some of those areas, for sure. Other than that, just, we have a lot of professional development coming up next Monday that we are doing. And I know this was brought up earlier and I think was referred to as a drip, but we will be looking to do some more curriculum work phases across all of our content areas. And so we are looking for a day that might work into the schedule that would be presented back to you. And we'll continue to talk about that. What that means is we have to find a day for our seniors to have counted as a student contact day so that we are meeting our calendar requirements. So just know that's still coming. And with that, I just want to thank our director and assistant director who are here tonight to talk about their goals as we tie everything together.
Are you going to put the cadence?
Yep. Yeah, so this is our cadence of rated responsibility. So each director, assistant director, the principals, they all write their goals and they have goals for each of our areas, whether it's engaged learners, effective operations, and communication and collaboration. And so they're smart goals and so they talk about how they're going to measure those. And then every month, they get an automatic request to reflect on each of their goals. And so they do that numerically and narratively as to where they are. And I will say, the one that we typically see at this time, maybe not having those gains, is effective operations. A lot of times, they're a little bit more long-term goals and so you don't see a lot of progress on some of those until a little bit later. But I wanted to give you some context each month and have our leadership staff speak to what their goals are and give us a sample of what that looks like. So thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for inviting us to be here this evening. It's good to see you all. I'm Megan Miller, Director of Special Services, and I'm just going to talk about a few of my goals that really go hand in hand. The first goal I'd like to talk about is under communication and collaboration. I will increase the use of the strategic plan and development of the monthly Special Services newsletter from the current level of having no link to noting elements of the plan. And it's linked to Special Services in every monthly edition by June 2023. And I know I do, I share the newsletter with you all. I don't know if you have a chance to review it, but I really actually, let me back up here quick. When we were in our principal or admin retreat this summer, Dr. Champa, we were, was reviewing the strategic plan with us and one question she asked us was, you know, do we bring this into our daily work? Are we putting this in front of staff? And I was unable to say yes to that. I hadn't been doing that and I really thought about the importance of, I mean, that's our guiding plan. So I want to ensure that I'm linking the work of Special Services back to our guiding plan. So therefore, that's why I've been bringing it into the newsletter. And while it's not part of my goal, I'm also, in the professional development that I'm planning this year, I'm also linking each PD session back to the strategic plan and how it aligns as well. Which brings me to my effective operations goal, which is to provide intentional staff development, increase educator knowledge of progress reporting and graduation by the individual education plan. And I have not presented or done a workshop on either of these yet. I have goals, for Monday, I'm actually presenting on accommodations and modifications for the high school team, which is a need that came up this year. But I already have plans in place to address these other needs. There's lots of PD needs, so it's prioritizing. But I will be addressing those. Actually, because IEP, graduation by the IEP is something that's very timely at the high school, rather than waiting for another PD day, I plan to record a virtual, like a taped session for staff to watch and then hold an after-school Q and A about it because the information needs to come out much sooner than later. So any, any questions about that?
This is marginally related to the goals, but I very much appreciate the newsletter and I want you to know that I do read that. I think it's, it's an insight to a really important component of our district and it's one that is so complex that every time I can reflect on and learn just a little bit more, it's very valuable. So thank you.
Great, thanks for that feedback. Great, thanks for that feedback.
All right, thank you for having us here. As Megan said, so my name is Jill Peterson. I'm the Assistant Director of Special Services and I'm new here this year. So it is nice to put a face with names and to be here. So, so in my goals, where I tended to focus, because I am new, I wanted to focus more, I'm gonna start from kind of the end. My Communication and Collaboration goal was really focusing on spending time to get to know staff. So just being intentional about being in buildings. I support our Early Childhood Special Education Program and then our three elementary schools are my primary focus. So I wanted to spend a lot of time just getting to know staff, getting to know their, you know, their programs, how they, how they run the programs, what their goals are, what they want to work on and how I can best support them. So that's been the goal of mine in first quarter, was to be able to meet with each one of the certified staff. I also oversee our PSAs, our People Support Assistance. So that's now, I'm looking ahead to how now I can transfer that to, it's a larger group, so how can I best meet with them and kind of meet those needs as well? So that's been a goal of mine. One of the other areas for the Effective Operations, we also purchased a couple different math curriculum, that was before I was here, for our elementary specifically in Special Education. And so, you know, sometimes when you purchase curriculum, it's, it's that making sure it gets implemented. So I have been, there's one lead from each of our elementary schools and so I've just been in contact with them. We kind of have been meeting, not formally, but just checking in to say, okay, what do you need? What do, what do we not have? They have been very proactive in reaching out to get support from the companies themselves, have done some online training and now are doing sort of a train-the-trainer model with other Special Education teachers within the district. So just making sure that that is moving along, I think, you know, has been, has been the other, one of the other goals I have. And then my third goal, kind of relating back to the survey results, is working with the three elementary principals, again, being new, just kind of to get to understand what are the needs in your buildings, where can I help support that? And so the focus has been a lot on what behavior support can we, can we provide at an elementary level and where we can look at how we can create kind of supportive environments within that elementary level. So those are the goals that I've been working on. So, any questions?
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. All right, I didn't, I didn't wanna come in early on that. Our next report for tonight is our Building Construction Fund project update. And I'll ask Director Subert to give us some information.
Highlight.
A highlight, yeah.
So just a quick reminder that the Building Construction Fund accounts for the money the district received from the voter-approved bonds. And those bonds were for school renovations and improvements. So a few updates since last month. The first one is for the ALC renovation project. We recently received a rebate on lighting for that project. So that was added in there. It was about $3,000. And then we had four projects that have now moved to complete. The McCullough Deferred Maintenance and Water Cooler Project, the middle school track, the monument signs, and the boardroom renovations, Phase Two. You can see right now, our available funds are about $170,000. And the other kind of highlight I'll touch on is the nature preserve gravel parking lot and monument sign. So that project is currently on hold and we are working with the county to get clarification on finding an acceptable area for the lot, kind of working through the details of the signs, also the size of the lot. So right now, what I did is I moved the monument sign money for that nature preserve into that project. So it's now the nature preserve gravel parking lot and monument sign. So as we work through some of those details, that project will be determined if it's moving forward or not. And that's all I have, unless there's questions.
I'm sorry I left my mic on. Hopefully, everybody was able to pick up what they wanted. Are there any questions with regard to the Building Construction Fund projects? Okay, hearing none, we'll get a report then on our Student School Board Representative. The status of that? We have it in here as a committee summary. Is that?
Director Tate.
Director Tate, okay.
Yep, so the newly developed School Board, Student School Board Representative Committee met November 16th. And we basically outlined the timeline that you see in the meeting notes. I should say proposed timeline, so for next steps, assuming that everyone at the table tonight is okay with these next steps, we'll go ahead and move this into, move a lot of this information into the, was it procedure?
Norm.
Norm, norm that Director Dressley created. So the proposal is that the application would open March 1st for all students in grade 10 and 11. The application would close the end of March then, March 31st. The committee's recommendation of applicants to interview would be presented to the board at that first working session on April 10th. The committee would recommend the top four applicants to the board in the following working session. And then the four student board members, which would be two 10th graders, two 11th graders, would be welcomed at the board table on that May 22nd regular school board meeting. And then in the summer, the school board, we would assign school board member mentors and they would be able to meet with the students to answer any questions. And then the student board members would begin participating in regular meetings in September. So for this, for next year, it would be September 25th. So any questions or concerns about the timeline? Yes?
This is awesome. Like, this is, this is really cool and it coincides with what we discussed the last time we talked about this. One, I guess, consideration for the future, I love this, but with the, the committee and the applications, I'm just wondering, do you foresee this moving into more of like allowing the student body to vote folks in? Or, you know, just a consideration with, you don't necessarily want student council to be the one selecting, so that it's a representation of, you know, the student body? So just, just a consideration for the future. I think for the first one, this is a really, really good practice. And then you can modify as you go along. But for now, I think this is, this is really good. I'm really excited for you guys.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions on timeline?
I don't have a question on timeline, but I have a point just for reflection. And that's that the, the committee's doing the interviewing. And I wonder if, if that might be done with the whole board? Just a point of reflection for a range of perspectives. So again, to be determined in the future, that'd just be a point to consider.
Okay, thank you. As far as other information goes, we decided to recommend that the student board members would serve one-year terms. We kind of discussed that it may be daunting to apply for a two-year term for a student, especially not knowing what this is all going to entail at first. But of course, we said that the students could certainly apply for a second year if they choose. And then we have that the applications will be vetted by the Student School Board Member Committee. Student names will remain confidential. And then all board members would have access to review the applications and provide input at the working sessions. The responsibilities of the Student School Board Member would be to attend all regular meetings and select working sessions, depending upon the topics to be discussed at those working sessions. The students would use Raider Connect Days for connecting with students K through four. They would use no school dates to connect with students when student board members don't have school, but other students are in school. And then they would be required to connect with building administrators to schedule the time with the students. So as far as next steps go, as I mentioned, if the board is in favor of what we've discussed already, we'll add that into the norms document. And then the committee would meet again in January 2024 to determine the requirements for applicants, which we came up with, two to start with. The student has to be in good academic standing and interest and ability to represent the entire student body. We'll also determine the selection process, the expected information for the student member to present to the board and how that will be presented, how the students will gather information from the entire student body, the division of responsibilities between the four board members. And then we'll create the application, which I've included the sample one that we saw in Oatana that looked pretty sufficient. So any other questions or comments?
I apologize, because we've talked a lot about this tonight. Just, I don't know how I missed this, but one of the things I hope we can do is put on the responsibilities that that's, that those students would also attend the MSBA Student Conference. And I don't know if we have to put that in the responsibilities or not, but it was a heck of a good day. And I, I want to make sure that they have that opportunity and I want them to know that it's our expectation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any, any other comments? Another point for reflection, and again, I think this is maybe, this reflection is about a first year versus future years. I would hope that the school board members, student school board members in the future have an opportunity to have a little bit of autonomy about what they present, how, what projects come forward for themselves, how they gather information and what a division of responsibility looks like. I understand the job doesn't exist yet, so sometimes it's helpful to frame that for people. But I think, I think the power of that perspective, just based on some of the articles that I've had an opportunity to read in the MSBA Journal, I, I don't want us to make it, I don't want it to feel so boxed in that a student with a, with a really different approach just feels like, yeah, no, that's too structured, I don't want that. So I, again, I think that's to, to Vice Chair Mom's point. Previously, there's, there's the getting it up and going year and then there's future years. And I hope it can grow into something like that. All right, and then I, okay, I'm sorry, I was looking down, I was afraid I missed something. So this, this committee will come into discussion, so in December, we'll be discussing likely standing committees for the next year. And at that time, we can, you know, consider what this would look like and maybe frame some sort of mission statement type thing or directive, so that it kind of sits in, in partnership with other standing committees that, that we would want to be ready, that the board would want to be ready to consider in January. I realized in the process of this reporting that I did not submit a 9/17 report. We did have a meeting, but I'll, I'll summarize the November and December activities for our December board meeting. And that was completely my oversight. Is there any further discussion on the school board member piece? Student school board member piece? Okay, I'm, I have the time of 9:13. Let's call a recess until 9:20. And then we'll come back and take on the policy committee meeting, review our policies, hit our consent agenda and our individual items for action. So we can use this time to reread 215, 215.1 PR, get ready for that discussion. Again, pointing out it is, at this point, just a second reading. And use the facilities if that's something you'd like to do or just stretch your legs. All right, see you at 9:20 on the universally agreed-upon school calendar, or school clock.
It's right here.
We're in recess. Yeah, it's up on the screen. Delete that. Yeah, they're attached. It's a single item. So just, just fine.
Yeah, the three we moved out of the consent into action.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, see?
Good thing you have two laptops.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, man.
Oh, I did it this afternoon because we knew it was probably coming, so, so I just wanted to make sure I had it.
Well, I was saying, we just don't all, so.
The reasons are bubbled or whatever on the side is that we're gonna talk about next meeting. I didn't expect talking about it at this meeting, so we'll have to curl that back on eventually.
Yes.
Which one do you think?
Yep.
So.
I don't know.
Which would be like, or not.
Now it's been.
I mean, there's something we did during the meeting.
Well.
Yeah, there's nothing on here.
As I went this afternoon, I went into the policy.
Set it for holidays.
Sure.
Is that already?
Yeah, just those, those tights.
See, all that there. That's what I didn't want to change.
This is here now?
No, this is on, this is on our chair.
Oh, that is now.
I have what's in there.
What are you even doing all this?
Yeah, what, what are we even doing all this?
But we'll have to add this back.
Is that back now?
No, this isn't back now. This is what was sent out.
It is not supposed to be.
No, it's not supposed to be.
Okay.
But that's what I wasn't comfortable changing without.
Okay.
Sure, we have that discussion.
accurate that around the corner, and, and we talked about looking forward and making sure that the community always knew what we were going to be doing next. The next body of work that we're going to be doing is the 300 series, which is administrative related policies.
And so the recommendation would be for first read in December. But that was just.
So, when we sat down earlier this year, we went through our, everybody's aware that we have a three-year review cycle. We went through all of the policies, divvied them out, and then for this first year, or for 2023, we broke it down by quarter and what we wanted to tackle. One of the, like, I guess you could call it a stretch goal, was that 300 series policies. We're now at a point, as long as we can get through everything that we have on here tonight, that is going to go for review and then either second read or to approval for December's meeting. The 300 series policies are, are up for consideration, so I know we've been, I've been kind of looking at the 300 series MSBA model policies, they're pretty standard, but this is also one of those, too, that I anticipate some administrative weigh-in in taking a look at other districts and what, how they implement the 300 series policies, but this is, this is, I guess you could title it new work, and where we're kind of at with our review cycle. One thing to, to add, and I know we, we briefly discussed it, too, is that in December, we want to take a look at 2024 and just, you know, do a re, a review of the three-year review cycle, making sure that we have everything in place, that any new policies that have been reviewed or the non-substantive reviews are actually going to go through a, a standard review as well. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done next Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. And I think maybe that's, like, the underlying statement there is what I was kind of asking about, like, are we at a place where we're ready to, to take this on? But maybe, hearing it presented as a stretch goal or a thing to do in the, you know, in coordination with completing this ongoing work, and then, given it's a brand-new area and a, at a first read, I would expect a heavy lean on, one, on MSBA model policy and then coordination with administration. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm, I'm very confident.
I just know that December's, one, it's full, we're, for the first time in quite a number of years, we have two scheduled meetings as a board in December, although that grew out of the fact that we had multiple meetings in December in the past, now we're just scheduling them. But I know that that's a tricky month to add, add workload.
It definitely is, and, you know, with this being a stretch goal, we're actually, we are in a good spot to start that, and I think if we do the legwork, kind of like with the student board member stuff, if we can do the legwork, you know, leading up to the, the end of December, then this new board will fall in on it once they, they find their cadence.
Any other questions about the summary before I start going into first reads? Okay, seen none. For first read, we have Policy 413, Harassment and Violence. These changes were made to reflect new Minnesota statute and law. In Section 2D, we added language, like, but these were all specifically from statute. Section 3D1, we added section, we added C. In Section 3D6, we replaced the language with what is now in statute. We did some minor spacing corrections in 3F, 5S, and 6A, and then we updated the cross references to accurately reflect ISD 200 policies that we have. Yep. Any questions on 413?
This is not about 413, but maybe we should, and we stumble in, are we ever going to get good at this? We stumble into this every time when we get between policy committee meeting and then policy first readings. So are we having conversations about the policy at this point, or are we having conversations about what's written down?
The, the policy, because the summary is just the top part, and then I go into first reading, so it's a first reading.
So from an agenda perspective, for anybody who's at home tracking the agenda on board book, or me, sitting here tracking it right now, we are now in, we're kind of going to go back and forth between having our policy committee update, and then we'll move into each of the first reading and then the second reading discussions. Okay. I am closing in on understanding this process. I'm not there, but I'm closing in on it. Okay, thank you.
I'm still getting my feet under me, because it's only the second time I've done it this way, so. Carrie, or Director Tate, sorry.
It's all good. So I do, I, I understand that this is following state statute, but the, the way that the policy, and this occurred to me today, so you haven't heard this yet, but I just want to say it, that it says that the purpose of the policy is basically to ensure that there's no harassment or violence against protected classes. And I guess I would, I question if we could possibly improve this policy by saying not just protected classes, but everyone, right, deserves the, the ability to be free from harassment and violence, not just because of specific, specifically named things in this policy.
So, so to be clear, the, the protected, this is a, this is not that some people would not be protected from harassment and violence, it's that you are protected from harassment and violence on the basis of.
Correct.
A characteristic of protected class.
Correct, and I understand.
And everybody has a characteristic of protected, has characteristics of protected class.
Right, but I'm just saying, but, but it's harassment and violence on the basis of their protected class. So I'm saying if there are things that they're experiencing harassment and violence on that fall outside of this list, it's not included technically in the policy.
Not in, I understand what you're saying, but I, I wanted to be clear that, that nobody is excluded from being in a protected class. Everybody is in a protected class, it's just a question, it's just a characteristic, it's a human characteristic.
No, but the.
So that's an interesting question, I think, like, where this overlaps with other questions about bullying. I understand, like, if somebody's just experiencing harassment or violence of a characteristic that is not protected because of a characteristic, that's what you're talking about. I, and I'm, and I get that, I just want to make it clear that, that there are no people excluded. There are pieces, places of harassment and violence that are, would not be linked in this, they'd probably be linked in other things, but, okay, so that'd be an interesting question to maybe.
Well.
Look for overlap with MSBA, like, is there, or other, other districts?
Since this, since this is a first read, I would say that it would come back, I mean, it will come back to committee, everybody, yeah.
If I may interject, thank you. Remember that this policy about harassment and violence is about mistreatment that happens because of a power differential between two groups of people. People that are in a class of power and people that are in, that are not in that class of power, and that's the differential here. If you look at the bullying policy, that's, that is really, that's broad-spectrum behavior that can, could, God willing, doesn't occur with any student. When you look at the hazing policy, there's no classification of whom the victim is, it's about the behavior that's occurring. The bullying policy is about the behavior that's occurring, and it's not about the class of the victim. This harassment and violence policy, 413, is about the classification of the victim and any harassment or violence that occurs because of their status. And, and that's why, you know, because the background of this really is Title IX and state statutes related to violence and harassment. And so I, I'm not saying that, I, I think it's appropriate that it goes back to the policy committee for our consideration, but there is a place for, gosh darn it, you can't come to school and be a bully, you can't be on the broom ball team, I picked that one specifically because we don't have one, you can't be on the broom ball team and have a hazing activity. Well, you can't haze and you can't bully, but that's not, that's not in reference to a classified group of people. Pardon me.
Are there any other questions regarding this 413 for first read?
Director Tate, did I see your hand go up?
Yeah, Director Moeen has a.
Mom, did you, oh, Ms. Moeen.
Sorry, I usually keep quiet over here. I just wanted to make you aware, I don't know if you noticed, that 5B talks about a form that is in the buildings for use to report, and there is not a form attached to this policy. So when I did a review, I worked with legal counsel, and I have a form for this policy to use with, with it.
The other thing, the other thing that I had, the other thing that I had done, I looked at this versus the MSBA model, and there were just some significant differences between the two, and I highlighted them and sent them to Director Dressley.
We will be addressing those at our next committee meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next one up for first read is Policy 416, Drugs, Alcohol, and Cannabis Testing. Again, this was heavily, this, these changes were made because of changes in statute and Minor language updates throughout the entire policy, they weren't substantial, or they weren't, they didn't affect the, the whole of the policy. Section 2, Section 2F, 1 through 4, to provide, we added those to provide that Section 181.952 rules are in writing and are in a written policy.
Is that referencing, is that referencing a state?
It is, but it's a rule.
Document? Yeah, 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 a legislative rule. Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then the next one, on Section 4, we did a title update to reflect the statute. Section 4A added 1 through 12 definitions, and then in Section 4B2, added cannabis testing exceptions.
You've got a couple more.
Thank you. In Section 4B3, we added A through D outlining Minnesota statute Section 181.953 and 181.954. In Section 4D, we removed definitions 1 through 8, and then we added cross-reference updates so that it indicated ISD 200 policies. Any questions on 416?
Director Tate?
Just that there was one concern that I, one significant concern that I had, and that was that there's multiple references in here, references in here for attachments, and I didn't find the attachments in the document itself, so I don't know if those exist or don't exist, but I didn't see them here, so.
And that is on my list of notes to bring back to the committee for discussion on our meeting next week.
Yeah, and I'll just, from a, for a reference point, the 400 series relates to employees. So when you, when, if somebody is reading this, like, if you're in a, in board book and reading this document, just to see where we're at, the 400 series specifically reply, specifically applies to employees, for, for context.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, the next one for 5, for first read is 504, Corporal Punishment and Proton Restraints. 507, sorry. Updates reflect clarity regarding prone restraint and the use of reasonable force that were provided in August from Minnesota's Attorney General. The committee recommends fast-tracking this policy for adoption in December, so after the second read. Section 2 added except as provided below. Section 4B added clarification to Minnesota statute Section 609.06 subdivision 1, and Section 5 added, and other school staff. Legal references were added, and we recommend moving this to action for December. I will say that we do have, at our next meeting, we have invited the Hastings Police, Chief of Police to come in and collaborate on this. Any questions on this or comments, concerns?
No, my, my question was whether or not this had been coordinated with our SRO. I, I don't want to fast-track it to a place where we harm that relationship.
Yeah.
Our interest in fast-tracking it is to protect the, the, the SRO and the Hastings Police Department and stay in close collaboration with them.
Our next policy is 601, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals. Updates reflect changes in statute and the Read Act. In Section 3, definitions reflect additions to Minnesota statute 120B11, point 11, the world's best workforce, it wouldn't be a law, sorry, that's miswritten there, it'd be the world's best workforce guidelines that went into effect on August 1st, 2023. Section 4A, 6 through 8, added education effectiveness practices. Section 4A, B, and C included literacy, plan language, and reading goals pursuant to Policy 621. Section 4D, 1 through 11, and 4E, 1 through 8, were removed, we removed the school district and site goals that were no, no longer aligned with policy, or that weren't in alignment with Policy 621. And the last thing we did with that policy is we added some legal references and cross references were updated to reflect MSBA's model policy. So this one was really strongly getting it back in alignment with MSBA's model policy. Yeah. Any questions on 601?
I just have one suggestion, and I wanted to bring it up to the full board here.
In Section 4B3, we added A through D outlining Minnesota statute Section 181.953 and 181.954. In Section 4D, we removed definitions 1 through 8, and then we added cross-reference updates so that it indicated ISD 200 policies. Any questions on 416?
Director Tate?
Just that there was one concern that I, one significant concern that I had, and that was that there's multiple references in here, references in here for attachments. And I didn't find the attachments in the document itself, so I don't know if those exist or don't exist, but I didn't see them here, so.
And that is on my list of notes to bring back to the committee for discussion on our meeting next week.
Yeah, and I'll just, from a, for a reference point, the 400 series relates to employees. So when you, when, if somebody is reading this, like if you're in a, in Board Book and reading this document, just to see where we're at, the 400 series specifically reply, specifically applies to employees, for, for context.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, the next one for 5, for first read is 504, Corporal Punishment and Prone Restraints. 507, sorry. Updates reflect clarity regarding prone restraint and the use of reasonable force that were provided in August from Minnesota's Attorney General. The committee recommends fast-tracking this policy for adoption in December, so after the second read. Section 2 added "except as provided below." Section 4B added clarification to Minnesota statute Section 609.06 subdivision 1. And Section 5 added "and other school staff." Legal references were added, and we recommend moving this to action for December. I will say that we do have, at our next meeting, we have invited the Hastings Police, Chief of Police to come in and collaborate on this. Any questions on this, or comments, concerns?
No, my, my question was whether or not this had been coordinated with our SRO. I, I don't want to fast-track it to a place where we harm that relationship.
Yeah.
Our interest in fast-tracking it is to protect the, the, the SRO and the Hastings Police Department, and stay in close collaboration with them.
Battery low. No. Our next policy is 601, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals. Updates reflect changes in statute and the REDACT. In Section 3, definitions reflect additions to Minnesota statute 120B11, point 11. The World's Best Workforce, it wouldn't be a law, sorry, that's miswritten there. It'd be the World's Best Workforce Guidelines that went into effect on August 1, 2023. Section 4A, 6 through 8, added education effectiveness practices. Section 4A, B, and C included literacy, plan, language, and reading goals pursuant to policy 621. Section 4D, 1 through 11, and 4E, 1 through 8, were removed, we removed the school district and site goals that were no, no longer aligned with policy, or that weren't in alignment with policy 621. And the last thing we did with that policy is we added some legal references and cross-references were updated to reflect MSBA's model policy. So this one was really strongly getting it back in alignment with MSBA's model policy.
Moving back.
Yeah. Any questions on 601?
I just have one suggestion, and I wanted to bring it up to the full board here. Under performance measures, it has the, it has four performance measures listed, and I'm suggesting that perhaps we add in another one. I mean, I'm a metrics geek, and I just like to have a lot of reference points, I guess, for measuring success. And I'm suggesting that we would add in perhaps ACT scores as something that's a constant that we have access to.
I see Director Dressley taking notes, so you've got that to take back. Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question of Dr. Champa? The, the four items that are there, are they exclusively the four items that relate, that align with the North Star?
Well, what's noted there is the World's Best Workforce, and so those strategies or metrics of success are determined individually by districts.
Good. Not good, or, I shouldn't say good or bad, I was just making sure that they covered the World's Best Workforce and that, the, whatever, what's it called, True North, or North, whatever it is. Sorry.
Yeah, North.
I'm, I'm trying to capture the title of, of an, of a new way of framing these standards. And so if we did, it would be under J, that there'd be two subtitles under J, because these four are part of World's Best Workforce, and, and a fifth would not be, which, not here nor there, it just, it would have to be different.
ACT scores can be a measurement in our World's Best Workforce?
Well, they can.
Sure. Like, that can be a strategy that we have included?
Good.
Well, 601 will come back to policy. Any other questions on that? Okay. Then we're going to move forward to next for first reading is policy 620, Credits for Learning. These updates reflected the change in statutes. Section 3B added references to statute. Section 3D, we removed language in accordance with what was changed in statute. Section 3B, language was replaced, and then cross-references were corrected to correct the title of policy 615. Any questions on 6?
Director Tate?
I just, I have more of a question for Superintendent Champa, and I guess everyone. In here, it states in policy that the school district does not offer weighted grades, and since this is only reviewed every three years, I am just asking the question, is this something that we would want to remain in policy, or is this something that we would want to pull it because it's something we would consider?
I would say if it's on a three-year rotation and something were to change, it would just be recommended that it would come back.
You'd just pull it out and cycle.
Right.
We actually have that, first 613 is coming back to us every June because of the changes that are happening, so it's, it's not uncommon.
Through at least 2029.
Any other questions on any of the first reads for tonight? Okay, then we're going to move on ahead to second reads. 213, School Board Committees, there were, we didn't have any requests for recommendations for policy 213, first time, the first read we had back in September, so.
So that'll be- So that'll likely be, well, pending this conversation.
Recommended, move to action for December.
Action for December.
Yep. Is there any discussion on 213? Seeing none, I would recommend that it moves to action for the December meeting. And then, we'll go ahead and talk about 215, policy 215. I apologize, my computer isn't up anymore, and it's just some notes I have here, so. So Section 1, we replaced the purpose statement. Section 2, we removed the last sentence of the general statement, and Section 2, we removed 1 through 5, and placed 1 through 5 in the procedure, 215.1 PR. Some of those were recommendation, were made on recommendations or comments from board members, but we, we did, we did take those into account when we had our discussion at the committee meeting. Any questions on 215?
Director Tate?
I still, I just have a lot of concerns about this policy because of the subjective nature of it, in that, the, the legal reference is for ultimate removal of a school board member for cause. To me, cause is a massive misstep. This is not, you know, anything, anything, anything other than that, this policy is essentially, I don't want to say meaningless, but it is meaningless, because if you think about it, if, if, if a board member's not doing anything for cause, and I'll just say, okay, so for example, our ethics policy for board members says that we are expected to be respectful and listen to each other's viewpoints on everything, right? Well, if a board member isn't doing these things, you can have conversation after conversation after conversation, but that doesn't, it's not, it's not cause for removal. So, my entire, it, it, it has to be written in a way that one removes all subjectivity so that it's a very, very clear cut reason that you would ever start this process with a board member, and also that, that it would, there would have to be a magnitude of whatever is going on that would have to meet a threshold. And I don't know how you spell that out, that's the problem with this whole thing, that there, there has to be something that's like, okay, yes, this is, this is something that they maybe shouldn't be doing, but ultimately, there's really no repercussions, really, because there's no way to tie it back to the state statute that's, that's referenced in this.
No, thank, thank you for that. I, I can see where you're, where you're coming, and I guess the way that I look at it, it's more of an expansion of our Code of Ethics and the accountability piece of it, too. So, but, you know, to your point about the subjectivity and, you know, removal for cause, and, you know, this constant, like, you know, it could be talked to five million times, but if you're not violating a law, or a procedure, or a policy, it's, it's, it's words, it's words on paper, right? But that's also where the interpretation of for cause would draw in legal. And that's the, to me, the heart of this policy is outlining, okay, at what point do we need to bring legal in to have an opinion about, hey, we have this concern that we need to address for whatever reason, what do we do? And it, it also tells board members and the community, too, that we are holding ourselves accountable and responsible for the Code of Ethics to, to maintain this position in, in our service to the community. So I guess that's, that's my interpretation of this policy, but I, I get, I get where you're coming from with like, okay, well, who's, who's the deciding factor, or what's the deciding factor on whatever, list the whole four pages of the Code of Ethics. It's, it's in our norms, it's in our policies, it's in law, and, and when in doubt, I guess I would hope that the chairperson is going to legal and saying, hey, what, what do I do with this? To me, that's, that's also holding the chairperson accountable, and the board accountable to the chairperson, too, should there be any concerns with that. That's, that's my interpretation of this.
I, I'm toggling back and forth between 215 and 215.1 PR, and I believe that the, that the controlling language is in 215, the policy in and of itself, in what is the current last sentence of Roman numeral 2, which says, therefore, in the event of a member violation of policy, procedure, or law. And I appreciate, Director Tate, your concern about it being ambiguous, or, not ambiguous, pardon me.
Subjective.
Subjective, and that, and that, the next piece that is now struck was the subjective language, you know? And, and so, when I read for cause in 215.1 PR, I read, I read policy, procedure, or law. I don't know if, if you read it differently.
Yeah, so, I, and I, I hear that. The problem that I have is that even if you look at our ethics policy 209, you can apply a whole lot of subjectivity around what I think is ethical, what you think is ethical, what, you know, any of us think is ethical, in line with even those written points. So, that's where I, I just, I have a serious issue with this policy and it being weaponized against people. And, and it, it, the way that we have it currently, and even the way that we have it rewritten here, I feel like that's, that's a risk.
Director Mullen? So maybe, the heart of the concern is not necessarily this policy, it's the ethics policy, but we, we made steps over the summer for that, and maybe we're just not there yet.
Can I just call, so the, what we're discussing right now is actually in 2.215.1 PR. It's not in, and we are not talking about the one that I have on, that I have up for second read right now, it's 215, which is only the statement, the purpose, and the general statement. There's two paragraphs there, and that's it, nothing else we're talking about, so.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, and that is where I have struggled with this, that this is a, this has been a policy that, to me, is about just a statement of intent to be accountable to each other, and I have struggled with the separation into 215 and 215.1 PR. So that's, that, I'm sorry, I get lost in that, and it's hard for me to realize when we cross the line, and that's, that's good.
So if anybody's got a question about the purpose or the general statement, or the, yeah, general statement, if not, we can move on to 215.1 PR and then have those other discussions.
I would recommend that we bring 215 to the December board meeting for approval, caveating that the Policy Committee will take a look at this on the 29th again, just to kind of clean it up and make sure it's, it's exactly how we want it.
And you're just talking about the 215 at this time?
Yes, but I'm going to do the same.
Any other questions about just the policy itself? Okay, so seeing none, I'm going to move on to 215.1 PR. What we did is literally, we took 1 through 5, removed it from the policy, and put it into the procedure, because that has been our practice, to remove policy from procedure, and then titling it the procedure, so it's more fluid. And we removed the purpose statement from the procedure, and that's the new purpose statement that was added to the policy. There were a lot of comments and suggestions for removing Sections 2 and 3. That is not something that we have done at this point. We just, in order for it to remain a PR, we just took the procedure right out of the policy, put it in the procedure. Any questions about, or any comments, concerns, 215.1 PR?
I mean, I think we're right back to the same conversation. So I, in my opinion, in order to start this process, I think that legal counsel should be consulted with upfront, because that, to me, sets a threshold for the importance of it, again, to align to that state statute. Because if, if, again, if we're, if we're looking at literally petty stuff, and, and this is being weaponized somehow, it, it, it's a, it's a waste of time, it's a waste of, I mean, I know that it says we, you know, if we're not doing policy, procedure, all this kind of stuff, but if, if somebody, and I'm going to say, if somebody inadvertently doesn't follow procedure on something, and suddenly, there, you know, this is, this starts the ball rolling, this is inadvertently forgetting or not following procedure, maybe because, and I'm looking to new board members here who have a giant amount of policies and procedures to learn, I don't think that that's appropriate to start a 215, right? Like, I, I don't agree that, that you have to have this private conversation, and it has to be shared with the entire board, the superintendent, whatever. This is, this is, to me, this is disciplinary action, and this requires a level of severity to get the ball rolling, so I think that legal needs to be involved immediately versus starting it based on, again, some subjectivity that, that's involved.
Is there any further conversation?
I, I apologize, I'm toggling back to 215, and, and here, I think the controlling language is willful and/or continuing policy violations. And, and so, I, I agree with you, Director Tate, that this is not, in no way is this intended for a misstep. In no way is this intended for a good-faith mistake. This is for a pattern of behavior, or a willful, obstreperous intent on, on, on the part of a person that's trying to move things off track.
Director Dressley, I just see your hand.
Yep, so, I believe it's in Section 2, or Number 2, where it does reflect to, after a private conversation, that it would go to the attorney before there was a closed session? Is, am I correct about that? Yeah, okay. And you're saying that it should go before question, before the first number one?
Correct. I think that there needs to be merit established with the, with the charged offense, ultimately, because, again, this is extremely subjective when you look at some of our policies, and if, again, it's, it's establishing, what is the threshold for starting a 215? And to me, if it's at the point where we need, yeah, we need to have a conversation with legal, you know that it's serious enough to tie it to the statute. Because, again, if somebody's being disrespectful at the table, if they're not listening to each other, that, it doesn't go anywhere. Like, it just doesn't. You can't remove a board member for not listening and not being respectful at a board table. That is, we're elected officials. It's extremely difficult to remove an elected official from their position. So, it, it has to be tied to the statute, and, and that, and that, and it clearly says that it's for cause. And when you think about, you know, what, what does cause mean legally, it's a, it's a big high bar that you have to try to meet. It's not petty stuff, it's not little stuff, this is for significant board member issues.
So I would suggest that maybe this come back to committee to have a discussion about whether or not that gets shifted around. I'm not opposed to it being in the first, in the first number, in the number one spot, because legal should be consulted when there's, when there's significant board member issues that need to be addressed with the policy 215, that will eventually remove a board member if gone down the track. So, I don't know if anybody opposes that, talking about it at the committee meeting, or?
Well, it's, we're at second reading. I would like to share a different opinion, but, or, or an additional opinion.
I'm not opposed to having legal involved earlier. I just liken this to all of the other things that I've done with students or employees. And if every time I wanted to talk to somebody about a corrective action, I needed to get legal involved first, our, our attorney bills would be egregious. And, and 95-plus percent of things get managed at that level. So doing, getting legal involved at the first incident, or at, at, at an incident that is so far away from removal, that we're, that's not even the conversation, I just- think that that's an inappropriate use of our time and our financial resources. We've all seen the attorney bills that, that, that cross our, our table in bills payable. And I just think that it would be inappropriate to involve legal before you have a conversation between a board chair and a board member, just saying, hey, are you sure you wanted to come off that way? This is the way, here's the policy. This is what we intended with the policy. Here's where I think you were a little bit, it just doesn't seem right to involve attorneys at that level. No offense to attorneys.
I appreciate that you turned your mic on back, back on for that piece. I've been trying really hard to listen to the underlying intent. And I think where the difference, where I feel like the difference of opinion is, is at, is at that purpose statement. And thank you, Director Zuzik, because I think you kind of summed up, from a different perspective, that. The first, it is a very high bar to remove a board member. It is a very painful experience to be at a really willful, intentional, or apparently intentional place where people are disregard, board members are disregarding responsibilities. And that's at the very highest and very infrequent place in this policy. But, and I do think we have to be to the, to the original purpose of this policy, and, and maybe just titling it violations makes it feel energized. But the idea that we're committed to faithful compliance with the provisions of our policies and procedures, and we're going to hold, we're going to hold ourselves to that account in a, in an effort to improve our practice and our representation of the community, that feels like a different level. I don't see that that first conversation is, is with intent leading towards, towards a removal. It's about, it's about that personal accountability. And, and whether it gets cleared up in that first conversation, and we say, oh, okay, maybe there is a difference of opinion, and now it needs to be back at a board table, and we need to be clearer about our procedure, we need to be clear about our policy, we have a difference of opinion at the table. We're also in a place where we're in growth with this policy, right? This is, we're in growth with this policy. And, and we're going to have bumps along the way in figuring out how to put it in place, but I think it's important for us to state as a board that we intend to be faithfully compliant with the provisions of our, of our board. So I, I mean, it's a second reading. It's going back to policy. You've heard, and if somebody has an additional opinion to share, just take that time, or you can provide comments to the, to the chair and the administrator of that committee, and they'll be brought forward as, as considerations.
So I would propose, along with what Director Dressley had said too, that the policy committee will take a look at this. I would like to pair this with 215. So I would like to see this at the table in December for consideration. But, yeah, the policy committee taking a look at both 215 and 215.1 PR at our 29 November policy committee meeting.
And I do have those notes as well for, they're in the agenda. So we'll be able to talk about all the points that were made at the meeting tonight, because these are all points that were emailed previously, so, yep.
I just want to thank everybody for that valuable conversation. Thank you.
So 613 graduation requirements, since this, this is a second reading, but we didn't have any more requests. This one was reviewed with the principal of the high school. So unless there's any comments or questions, concerns tonight, I would move that this one go for.
Expected plan.
Yep, adoption next in December. Any questions, concerns about 613 graduation requirements? Seeing none, I would recommend that that moves to action for December. Policies for approval with non-substantial changes, and normally I wouldn't go into these very, at all really, except for naming the policies, for 412 expense reimbursement, but 412.1 PR administrative procedure. There are some conflicts in that with our 214 for our board member expense reimbursement. So I just wanted to call that out, so that we could maybe take that back to policy and get that fixed before we put it through as a.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay.
I'll go ahead.
What was, is this, is it substantial, or is it just like a word or a comma?
If we were to take board members out of the three spots, I think it's three or four spots that it's in, we could, we could go ahead and pass it tonight, because we have our expense reimbursement, or our out-of-town travel reimbursement statement in our 214. So it's, it's just, it doesn't align with, it says that the board member would comply with the supervisor, or would get authorization from a supervisor. It doesn't match up with what our policy says on, on reimbursement for out-of-town travel, so.
Ms. Ludwig, my computer died. Can you pull up that policy, please?
Well, while she's pulling that up, I will point out, and this is a point that we have yet to test very much, is that procedures are administrative, and if it's, if it needs to be aligned, it doesn't have to pass at a board level, right? If it needs to just be, we need to revise some titling or something like that. So I think we'd have to have a good practice about that, because we have a 413 PR right now. Is that accurate?
412.
412, excuse me. I'm only confused by this, I'm additionally confused by this, by the fact that we're talking about 412 and 214. I find that slightly confusing, and consider it a constant typo. So I'm trying to rise above that thing, too.
And not only that, but the 400 series are supposed to be aligned with staff, and not to say that board members aren't staff, but they're.
They're not employees.
They're not employees.
They're not employees. School, school members are not employees. So, okay, do we have it up? Or do you have what you're looking for?
Would it be under expense reimbursement?
It's at the, it's in the expense reimbursement portion, if you keep going. Well, board members was in there, too, in the top.
Yeah, it's in there, but it's.
It's multiple times, and then it talks about board members having an appropriate, or they're like a supervisor, a board member's supervisor approving expenses. And it's like, well, that doesn't make any sense, because board members don't have a supervisor.
And the policy 214 states the administrator, the delegated administrator, which is a little bit clearer language than the board member's supervisor. So maybe just changing that wording could get it. I'm completely fine with that. I just didn't want to pass it with going through consent, knowing that it was conflicting with 214, which now has been updated by MSBA as well.
Yeah, so we currently have a 412.1 administrative, so we can, I mean, if it goes back to committee, or go, or, or it just needs to be clarified as a procedure, it doesn't.
It's a process, too.
It, it just belongs to administration to, to clarify that.
Yeah.
I don't think it, I'm not convinced, I mean, when it gets to it, I don't know that we need to, especially because there's not other changes. I don't think we need to do anything, and we just need to point out that upon review, that, that inconsistency was noted, and then administration can make a modification and inform us that they cleared that up.
Perfect. That works, that works.
Right? Is that how, is that how procedures are supposed to work, right?
And then the only thing that changes that policy review date, would be the date that we have our policy committee meeting, I presume?
Well, again, I don't know that the policy commi, I think it would be.
Administration.
It's administrative. So the administrative would maybe.
Thank you.
Would clarify it, and that's the date that, that.
Is the date on that not, not the 11/8/2023 date?
Date of effect, yeah.
It is, it is on your attached one.
It is on your attached one right now. The one on the website is, it was 12/8/21.
Okay.
And, and if, if the procedure gets updated, and instead of, you know, supervisor for employees, and school board chair, or school board decision, or something.
And I would actually recommend that for the procedures, that what we are practicing currently is the adopted and revised go away, just the review stays there for the.
Oh, going forward?
Yep, that's, that's what we've been practicing, is that the adopted and revised go away, and just the review, not for policies, just for procedures.
So that we know when.
Yeah, I'm completely fine with that.
So the specifics of that will happen when we get to that individual action item and whatever. But that's sort of how I was like, looking at this one and thinking about how to, how to resolve that, who's the supervisor of who, and who are you just submitting a document to?
I just wanted to point that out, but, yeah, that makes sense to, it's a procedure. It doesn't need to have to come back to the board table here. So that completes my policy summary for October, November. Yay!
Thank you.
It's a lot, but it was, it was valuable discussion and, and building some discipline around our practice. It was valuable. All right. It's been a long time coming, but we're moving on to action items.
I'm glad I touched on that.
I'm glad I drank a Diet Pepsi.
For Thanksgiving.
All right. Our first action item for tonight is, I would entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So move, Mom.
Second, Tate.
We have a motion and a second on the table to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Did you get the motion and a second on that? Okay. I was scrolling. All right. We will now move to individual action items. The first of which is, is the 412.1 PR administrative procedure. I don't know what to do with this, so it's not really an action item.
If I would have known a way to put it back into the consent agenda at this point, I would have, I would have done so much.
So let's just acknowledge, can I get an acknowledgement that this is a procedure and that the clarification of the supervisory.
Acknowledged.
Statement is, will we go back to procedure, or will go back to administration to clarify?
Absolutely.
Let's do a thumbs up on, I don't know, if that's, that's not true action. With no motion or a second, we just all understand what the intent is for that document. Thank you. Our next action item is, I would entertain a motion and a second to approve the non-contract rates of pay.
So move, Dressley.
Zuzik, second for non-contract rates of pay.
All right, so we have a motion, Dressley, second, Zuzik on the table to approve the non-contract rates of pay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. And Hiddene is going to abstain, because I occasionally intersect with some of these rates of pay. We have four in favor, no one in opposition, and Hiddene will abstain. Our next individual action item is a motion to approve the teacher's contract for 2023 to 2025. At this time, I would entertain a motion and a second.
Zuzik, motion to approve.
Dressley, second.
Is there any discussion? Director Tate?
I just want to say this, the red line version is excessively colorful, so there was just a lot of work that went into this. And just thank you to everybody who put in, put in the effort.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All right. We have a motion, Zuzik, was it motion Zuzik, second, Dressley, if I remember correctly, on the table to approve the teacher's contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Approval is unanimous. Our next action item for tonight is a motion to approve the 2223 audit report. Would entertain a motion and a second.
So move, Dressley.
Second, Mom.
Is there any discussion? We have a motion, Dressley, second, Mom, on the table to approve the 2223 audit report. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. The motion carries unanimously. It feels like we just got done with this, but we have another action item on the table to undertake a combined polling places resolution. I would entertain a motion and a second to waive the reading, to, to approve the resolution while waiving the reading of the combined polling places.
So move.
And I would second and waive the reading.
All right, so the motion was Tate, right? Okay. Second, Zuzik. Is there any discussion? You're going to say what I was going to.
Okay, I just, I, I've, I've heard rumblings about this concern that there's the combined polling place because it is quote unquote voter suppression. And I just, I did ask the question today, and I don't know Superintendent Champa, if you want to cover what you already covered today, or if you're prepared or not, I.
Just the cost?
Just the, 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 the cost, the human collateral involved, all of this that's involved in attempting to hold a school, the school board election in all polling locations.
So if we had it in all polling locations, that's 25 sites. And so having a head judge and election judges, and I can't even remember the number of judges required, it's a lot. And so it's about $2,600 per site, or $71,000 collectively. And that is just the dollar amount, right? That's not the, the people power that goes behind that.
I will also point out, that's interesting. That's not what I thought you were going to say. But we did have a conversation as a board about the process to move to even your elections, if that's a point of interest for future boards. And that's been documented, and that information is available. This is an action that needs to be taken in the event that there is not a movement to an odd year election, right? And this is, this is a time-sensitive decision. So this is a thing that we are doing to cover one potential future, does not cover all potential futures. In the event that there is a decision to move to an even year election and partner with other agencies and organizations to support some of those polling sites, that's a future discussion. But this is a piece we're doing in the event that we stay with our current, that the Hastings district is we, in that sense, stays with its current practice of odd year elections.
Recognizing the, the cost for holding polling stations for all of our areas, this is something that I've opposed with the combined polling since I started on the board. So it's not going to be a surprise when I vote here. I, I think that this is something that can be looked at, and even, I, I don't think we need to have 25 sites, but I think we need to expand it a little bit further, given the area that we cover. So I just wanted to make sure that that is known, and where I stand on this. You know, there's, I'm looking at Denmark Township, Rivanna, there's, there's, there's a lot of areas that are not covered. And with our aging population, I want to make sure that voting spots are accessible to everybody. So I, I recognize, and this is where it's, it's a really tricky point for me, because it, it's, it's money. It costs money. But I also want to make sure that people have access. And, and one of the biggest complaints that I've heard from our townships is like, why, why do I have to drive, you know, 20 miles to, to get to a voting location? It's, it's just a concern. So just wanted to voice that.
Director Tate?
So I got, so that, that's a great question, because I, I agree with you. I think having all of the townships everywhere, and especially during harvest time, makes it very difficult for a lot of farmers to get in to vote. And I know that we do have early voting available. have early voting available, but there are some people who just aren't comfortable doing that, right? And that's their choice. So, you know, this is just presented to us like this. When does this need to be voted on? And can we alter this? Can we agree that, you know, I don't know how this feel obviously, but I do, I strongly feel that we should have a few more voting locations because we are such a huge geography.
That's, thank you for bringing that up because I asked that exact question this time last year and of course we missed the deadline, but I believe the answer, I'd have to take a look at my emails, but it's like June, July timeframe that we would have to say, okay, we really want to take a look at this combined polling location resolution. So maybe, you know, for future board, you need to take a look at that if, if you don't move to even years or even if you do, depending on what those COAs, courses of actions are, military speaking, what those courses of action look like if you were to shift the, the election period, that this needs to be tied into that.
So I can sense, my spidey sense is telling me that there's Google searching happening right here, which we probably should not rely on exclusively for purposes of this table. I'm going to. I do feel like it's important for today's purposes that we approve this resolution as it stands so that, and quite honestly, I have lost track of if it's mandatory to do it in November, but to reiterate that if it's here, that we're in a solid spot. I know that there was some issues in the Stillwater District around postcard mailing with modification of sites and that was happening earlier in the spring and the, earlier in the summer. So again, this is an issue about how does this go forward for a future board? Do you have your hand up?
Could we possibly put it on the table for a discussion in June, July on our, like just a little, a little note so that we don't lose track of it if we want to have this discussion to expand the number of polling places for the next time we have to have it in May?
I think what we should do to not, and not even make an assumption about the timeline right here is we'll get feedback in the next couple of days from the district office, maybe not because of Thanksgiving, and then, and then it'll get early enough into the calendar, it'll get added. But I think that point is, is valid. I just don't want to presumptively put it somewhere and then make a bad decision about the time.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Isn't there any further discussion on this topic? There is a motion in a second on the table to approve the combined bowling places resolution, waiving the reading of the resolution. Hearing none, I'm going to ask our treasurer to do a roll call vote.
Director?
Yes.
Chair Hadeen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mom?
No.
Director Zuzik?
Yes.
Treasurer Dresley?
Yes.
All right, so the combined polling place resolution passes and I believe both our administrative assistant, Ms. Ludwig and Superintendent Champa have access to the board calendar and when they receive specific information about what the appropriate time is for the future board to reconsider this, that'll be added to the 2024 board calendar. And you'll see that. And I'm saying that because I'm, I'm kind of out of pocket for the next week and a half after tonight, so I'm not going to be super, super, super engaged, but if we get that information, we'll get it added.
Okay. I pick Riley up tomorrow, so I'm not going to be.
Oh, okay. Our last remaining action item for tonight is a motion to approve the 2023 election count canvassing resolution. I would ask for a motion in a second again to waive the reading of the resolution.
Zuzik, I'd recommend approving with waiving of the resolution and just want to comment that I was struck that there was not a single vote change. And, and I think that that should really help our, our electorate to feel very comfortable and compet, and, and comfortable and confident in the way that votes happen in this community. Thank you.
I will second that motion.
Is there any discussion? I will point out this, this is again, this is a canvassing action. We will have a vote certification action that has to happen more than seven days after the election, so that will be an action item for a future meeting, probably December 6th. We'll do it as a special meeting component of that work session. That'll be the vote certification. And this is just a constraint timeline. We're not in a place where having moved this up a day, we cannot take that action tonight. All right, is there any further discussion with regard to the motion on the table to approve the 2023 election recount canvassing with a waiving of the reading? Okay, hearing none. Treasurer Dresley, will you please take a roll call vote?
Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Zuzik?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mom?
Yes.
Chair Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Dresley?
Yes.
Yeah, speak of yourself in the third person, that's super comfortable. With that, we have a unanimous approval of the canvassing resolution and that is our last action item for tonight. We'll preview what we have for future meetings. I kind of gave a little bit of a drip. We will have in, on December 6th, a special meeting as we are obligated to have our world's best workforce report prior to the 15th of December. And so that our regularly scheduled board meeting is too late. So we will have that. We will have a certification of the vote and we will close for a superintendent midyear evaluation. And that just makes, I think this is just a brain thing for me, like it makes more sense to close during a special meeting than to close during a work session. I don't quite understand how that would work. So we will close for that. That's my time to pitch. Put your feedback into the comments by the 28th. I have, I have carved out time on the 29th to consolidate comments and, and reports. I'm not going to be putting out secondary reminders, I'm not going to be extending it. That, that is the time that I have available to consolidate those, that comment. So please take the time to do it prior to that or you're just not, you're not going to see your things, your comments reflected prior to that special meeting.
Just for clarification, so we're going to have a board, a special meeting, a closed session and then a work session on the 6th.
Correct. Yep, the world's best workforce will be in a, will be a part of the special meeting. It's easier for me to conceptualize closing during a regular meeting and then that meets our timeline for certification of the vote. So then we'll get through those things and we'll move to a work session. We are starting at six, by the way. I don't know that we'll go this late. We'll be looking at, reviewing the proposed revised budget. It's commonly done in December, so the work session review of that revised budget will happen. We'll continue our conversation about 2024, 25 budget assumptions and the associated guiding principles. We're, we have a tickler about scheduling a discussion around trip guidelines with a particular focus on equity and accessibility. My recollection is that's around financial accessibility. We have that. We'll have a discussion with regard to standing committee recommendations. And then we have a difference of opinion at the board and this is at the board table with regard to questions and concerns process. This is a conversation, the resource, administrative resource demands that we started in September and it fell off, honestly, it fell off my plate with the levy work. So we can touch base and see where the board guidelines or consensus is or thoughts are about that. Then we have a December 20th board meeting. We haven't had a scheduled board meeting this late in the past, but this, so this is kind of a test year, like those of you staying on the board reflect on the, the value of two meetings in December. It's on the 20th. At this meeting, I anticipate that we will approve the revised budget for 23, 24 school year. There will be a truth in taxation hearing, which will be an opportunity for public input. And those of you who have received your property tax statement, you can see that's a published date, that's published on the 20th, so that will happen. There will be a summary of the superintendent's midyear evaluation. There'll be the state of the district presentation. We're building discipline about doing that on a regular basis. And then clearly the most important thing that's going to happen at that meeting will be a fond, tearful farewell to outgoing board members.
A lot of celebration.
Okay, there'll be a lot of celebration. I'm not sure from whom. Oh, apparently Director Mom will be celebrating. I've got my fingers crossed that there's blankets. Maybe there'll be snacks. It's anticipation continues to build and that, that's what I have. And again, I, I anticipate being out of pocket until about the, I'll be back for the work session. I'm not going to probably reengage until around the weekend before, so no notes from the chair. This was long enough, you can just reflect on this experience. When you get, when you get sad, when you get sad and lonely, just re-watch this meeting and it'll be like you were there. Director Champa?
All right, just one quick comment. This was in the personnel report, but just, I know that you approved some district office positions last year. And so there have been so many moving parts in the district office and just with me being new, wanting to really take time to really analyze the work that's being done. And I will tell you, there's a lot of people working really hard in that district office. So tonight, what you saw were a number of areas that are classification moves, some a little higher, some a little lower, we've had some retirements, all of that. And so then in addition to that, there will be a posting for an HR generalist, but just wanted to give you a little bit of update on, on some of that. So, thank you.
I'm going to try and get that. Yeah, that'd be terrific. Okay. Director?
Madam Chair, I, I didn't squeak my way into the future meetings thing, but I, it's just an open question about this. And I'm not expecting the answer tonight, but how do we proceed on this issue? The work session tentatively for January is scheduled for Wednesday, the 10th, and that's going to be the same evening prior to the MSBA leadership conference where phase one training happens. And they have a lot of bird's eye view, you know, like the early bird sessions. And so if we want to look at, frankly, it could be all seven board members really being inconvenienced and Dr. Champa. So I wonder if that's a, a date that although we want to stick to Wednesdays whenever possible, I wonder if there's some way we can look at that.
So I'm looking at a calendar for the 2023 school board calendar, the 2023 school board calendar, and it, it has, and I think we talked about this a number of months ago, January 3rd is the board organizational meeting and the board's work session. So that's, that's being driven forward. I understand the board organizational meeting is supposed to happen as close as possible to the first Monday in January. It's not going to happen on the first Monday in January, so, so it creates space for the organizational meeting and a work session as well as an opportunity to participate in the phased training that might be that evening and, and other things associated with the MSBA conference.
And maybe I'll ask.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what is, that's what's listed currently in the 2023 calendar.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it and that's great. I just, Ms. Ludwig, can you double check? There might be a meeting invite out there for the 10th. So it's like a Google invite out there for the 10th and we need to change the date to the 3rd to both be a work session and the org meeting. Thank you. That's thoughtful, whoever did that, you probably did, so thank you.
I bet it was Jen. Yeah, I suspect that was a renewal meeting, but it's very important to point that out now and get that, get that ahead of people. Yeah. Okay, good. Oh, thank you, thank you. All right, does anybody else have anything? I got to get back to my board book. Here we go. All right, I would entertain a motion in a second to adjourn.
So move, Dresley.
Second, mom.
We'll ask, was it going to die for lack of seconds?
That's what I was thinking.
Whenever that pause is too long, I do worry that the adjournment is going to die for lack of second. Be the one and only time I'd weigh in on a motion or a second as chair. So we have a motion in a second on the table. I've already forgot who it was. Dresley, motion, second, mom. Any discussion other than that goofball stuff? No? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Captain.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank, thank you. I thank everybody for accommodating the time shift and the heavy, heavy lift of a board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.